Good evening. As Chairman of Hartford Board of Education, I hereby call to order April 15th, 2024, a regular meeting. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. The Board, Superintendent, and I are pleased that you have joined us to celebrate achievement, review information, and make policy decisions related to the effective operation of Hartford Public Schools. This is a regular meeting, and all items that will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. As the Hartford Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to the reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contract personnel appointments, and make policies for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve the problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent. The monthly meetings of the Board are open to the public. They are the time when the Board conducts its business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public. Therefore, comments from the audience will be confined to the time designated for the public to address the Board. The quorum and courtesy are important elements in effective public meetings. Please silence your cell phones or communication devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that proceedings be accurately recorded, I may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased you have taken this time to join us this evening. We are very proud of the school system and thank you for your interest at Hartford Public Schools. Now this will be read in Spanish.
Buenas noches. El presidente de la Junta de Educación de Hartford ha llamado orden esta reunión ordinaria de la Junta del 16 de abril del 2024. Damos una cálida bienvenida a todas las personas presentes y a nuestros televidentes. La junta y las superintendentes se complacen que se han unido a nosotros para celebrar logros, revisar información, y tomar decisiones relacionadas con el funcionamiento efectivo de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Esta es una reunión ordinaria y todos los asuntos que serán discutidos o votados en esta tarde han sido notificados como lo requiere la ley estatal. Como Junta de Educación de Hartford, estamos aquí para establecer metas, escuchar los informes de la superintendente, aprobar los presupuestos, contratos y nombramientos de personal, y establecer normas para el distrito. No estamos aquí para tomar decisiones administrativas o resolver problemas individuales. La administración es la responsabilidad de la superintendente. Las reuniones mensuales de la junta están abiertas al público. Son el momento en que la junta lleva a cabo su tarea de gobernar el sistema escolar en un espacio público. Las reuniones regulares no son reuniones con el público. Por lo tanto, los comentarios de la audiencia se limitarán al tiempo designado para el público dirigirse a la junta. El decoro y la cortesía son elementos importantes en reuniones públicas eficaces. Por favor, silencie sus teléfonos celulares o dispositivos de comunicación y absténganse de hablar mientras otros están hablando. Ya que es mandato legal de que los procedimientos sean grabados con precisión, es posible que tengamos que pedir orden periódicamente si el ruido interfiere con nuestras capacidades de grabación. Nos complace que se haya tomado el tiempo esta tarde para unirse a nosotros. Estamos muy orgullosos de este sistema escolar y les damos las gracias por su interés en las escuelas públicas de Hartford.
Thank you. We will now move to public comment. Board Member Smearly.
We, as a board, in collaboration with the superintendent and district leadership, are committed to cultivating a culture of excellence at all levels of HPS. We thank you for taking the time to attend tonight's board meeting. We appreciate your coming out to learn more about Hartford Public Schools and for sharing your thoughts and concerns. We've established a protocol to track and respond to concerns raised. We want you to know that we take your concerns seriously, and to that end, staff will follow up within 48 hours if follow-up is required via the preferred method of contact the speaker has indicated on the sign-in sheet. We will follow this no-contact method of follow-up for the time being adhering to safety protocols. As a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. At the two-minute mark, the bell will ring, letting you know that you have one minute left. At the second bell, please wrap up your comments. Now this will be read in Spanish.
Nosotros, la Junta de Educación, en colaboración con la superintendente y el personal del distrito, estamos comprometidos a cultivar una cultura de excelencia en todos los niveles de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Les agradecemos que se haya tomado el tiempo para asistir a la reunión de la junta esta noche. Les agradecemos su participación y su deseo de aprender más sobre las escuelas públicas de Hartford y también de compartir sus pensamientos y preocupaciones. Nosotros tomamos sus preocupaciones muy seriamente y hemos establecido un protocolo para el seguimiento y respuesta a inquietudes planteadas. El personal hará un seguimiento dentro de las 48 horas si fuera necesario a través del método de contacto preferido que el orador haya indicado en la hoja de registro. Seguiremos este método de seguimiento sin contacto por el momento, adhiriéndonos a los protocolos de seguridad. Esa persona investigará su caso y se le comunicará con usted dentro de las 48 horas. Les recomendamos que tienen tres... Les recordamos que tienen tres minutos para hablar. Cuando han pasado dos minutos, el timbre sonará dejándole saber que le queda un minuto. Al segundo sonido, por favor, termine sus comentarios.
Hello, members of the Board. My name is Sumali Chambuna and I'm a junior at HMTC. I come before you today as a student who is deeply concerned about the proposed financial budget cuts that threaten my school in an economically disadvantaged city. I believe it is crucial to remind ourselves of the mission set forth by Hartford Public Schools: to provide all students with the learning and support they need to succeed in school and in life, ensuring that they graduate prepared to transform our world. I fear that the proposed budget cuts are in direct contradiction to this mission. How can we claim to be providing all students with the support they need when we are slashing the very resources and programs that are vital to their success? First and foremost, my school, HMTC, serves as a lifeline for many students in my community. It is a place where we not only learn but also find support, guidance, and a sense of belonging. Cutting funding to my school would not only impact our academic experience but also deprive us of the essential resources and support systems that are crucial for our success. Furthermore, we must acknowledge that our school is more than just a building. It is a hub of opportunity. It provides extracurricular activities, counseling services, and enrichment programs that help us grow academically, socially, and emotionally. These programs are essential for nurturing well-rounded individuals and preparing us for the challenges that lie ahead. Yet, these proposed cuts threaten to undermine the very foundation which our education is built upon. The importance of investing in our future is well-understood and that education is the key to unlocking opportunity and breaking the cycle of poverty. But how can we succeed when we are denied the resources and opportunities necessary to thrive? Moreover, these cuts will not just affect the students, they will also impact our teachers and staff who work tirelessly to support us in our academic and personal growth. They are the ones who inspire us, challenge us, and believe in us even when we doubt ourselves. Cutting their positions and resources is not just detrimental to us, it is detrimental to the social fabric of the HMTC community. But perhaps, most importantly of all these points, I urge the Board to remember the faces and voices who will be most impacted by these cuts. We are not just numbers on a budget sheet. We are individuals with dreams, aspirations, and a desire to learn. Cutting honors... Oh, my bad. As an honors student who takes honors classes, these courses are essential for my academic development. If funding is reduced and these classes are taken away, so are the opportunities that accompany them. They will not only deprive us of valuable learning experiences but will also be a disservice to students who already feel the effects of receiving education in an economically disadvantaged city. I implore the panel to reconsider the proposed budget cuts and to prioritize the well-being and success of all students. We cannot afford to let short-sighted financial concerns undermine our collective future. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Board Members, Superintendent. My name is Michael Downs, 74 Rosemont Street, Hartford, Connecticut. I've noticed... Last month, I mentioned something about Wish School. And I still don't see any shovels out there. And I haven't seen a discernible design or even a tentative blueprint of the school that's going to be built there or renovated there. And I think it's time that we moved on with that. I get a lot of complaints from my neighbors that they're concerned that the school is not going to be rebuilt. And I assure them that it will be. It's taking a long time, and I think it's taking too long. So we'll see if we can push that along somehow. And also on the budget, I trust that you have squeezed as much out of the budget and the money and the resources that the city has from the state, the federal government, as well as the local sources, which are very few. Or certainly, with a city that has close to a trillion dollars' worth of corporations in it, there certainly should be more funding coming out of the city. And I hope that nothing is removed from this budget by the City Council. Thank you.
Hello, Hartford Board of Education members. My name is Liliana Miller, and I'm a junior at HMTC. And I'm deeply scared of the budget cuts that might be coming to my school. Not just the loss of these honors classes, the loss of teachers, the loss of funding for school activities and extracurriculars, and the loss of funding for upcoming seniors. I take honors classes a lot. I... They're what I use to get the most out of my education. They're what really prepares me for the future. And with the teachers that I also have, they really support me. They uplift me, and they help give me the best out of my education. Not only to lose these honors classes, but these teachers will deeply affect my education, and I hope that these cuts can be repealed. Thank you.
Good evening, Board Members. My name is Kenias Irizagri, and I'm a junior at HMTC. I am here to express my deep concern regarding the recent budget cuts and the subsequent loss of staffing at our school. The impact of these budget cuts on our educational experience has been significant and distressing. Our school community has already felt the effects of reduced resources and staff shortages, and it is becoming increasingly difficult to maintain the higher standard of education that I have come to expect at HMTC. The loss of staffing has resulted in larger class sizes, making it challenging for teachers to provide individualized attention and support to students. Many of us feel demoralized and disillusioned by the lack of investment in our education and future. It is disheartening to see our school struggle to provide the resources and support necessary for us to strive academically and also personally. I urge the Board of Directors to reconsider these budget cuts and prioritize the well-being and success of students at Hartford Magnet Trinity College Academy. Investing in education is an investment in the future of our community, and it is crucial that we provide our students with the resources and support they need to excel. Thank you for taking the time to consider my concerns. I sincerely hope that together we can work towards ensuring a brighter future for all students of all schools. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education members. I am a junior at HMTC. My name is Brianna Echeverria. I am writing to you today as a concerned student at Hartford Magnet Trinity College Academy to express my deep apprehension regarding the recent budget cuts and subsequent loss of staffing at our school. These cuts have had a profoundly negative impact on the quality of education and overall well-being of students, particularly in our special education programs. As you are well-aware, adequate staffing is essential for providing a supportive and enriching learning environment for all students. However, the shortage of staff, especially in special education, has left many students without the necessary resources and support they require to thrive academically and socially. This shortage not only impedes the process of students... The progress of students with special needs but also places an immense burden on the remaining staff who are struggling to meet the diverse needs of their students with limited resources. Furthermore, the loss of staff members due to budget cuts has resulted in larger class sizes and reduced individualized attention for students. This not only hinders the learning process but also diminishes the quality of education that we as students are entitled to receive. As a result, many of us feel neglected and unsupported in academic pursuits, which is detrimental to our overall academic success and future prospects. It is imperative that the Board of Directors take immediate action to address these pressing issues and prioritize the allocation of resources to ensure that all students, regardless of their needs, receive the education and support they deserve. Investing in our education is an investment in the future of our community, and I urge you to reconsider the recent budget cuts and work towards finding substantial solutions to alleviate the static shortages at our school. I implore you to listen to the voices of students, parents, and educators alike and take proactive measures to rectify the current situation. Our education is too valuable to be compromised by budgetary constraints and is incumbent upon the Board of Education to prioritize the well-being and academic success of all students at Hartford Magnet Trinity College Academy. Thank you for your education... Thank you for your attention to this matter, and I eagerly await your prompt and action to address these critical issues. Sincerely, Brianna Echeverria.
Good evening, Board of Directors and Superintendent. Hello, my name is Aisling Green, and I am a school social worker at HMTC. There are members of the Board of... There are members of the Board of Directors. I am writing to express my deep concern regarding the recent budget cuts affecting Hartford Public Schools. As a member of the community, I'm deeply invested in the welfare of our schools. I am troubled by the potential repercussions these cuts will have on our students, educators, and the overall quality of education in our district. The decision to implement budget cuts and subsequent staff layoffs will undoubtedly have far-reaching and detrimental effects on the educational experience of each and every one of our students. Our schools rely on a dedicated and passionate team of educators whose invaluable contributions to the learning environment cannot be overstated. With layoffs looming, we risk losing talented individuals whose expertise and commitment are crucial to the success of our students. Furthermore, these budget cuts threaten to undermine the progress and achievements our schools have worked tirelessly to attain. Reduced resources and staffing levels will inevitably lead to larger class sizes, diminished access to essential programs and services, and a decline in the overall quality of education provided to each and every one of our students at Hartford Magnet Trinity College Academy. Such conditions are not conducive to fostering a positive learning environment or ensuring the academic success and well-being of our students. It is imperative that we prioritize the needs of each and every one of our students and safeguard the integrity of our educational system. I urge the Board of Directors to reconsider the proposed budget cuts and explore other alternative solutions that prioritize the long-term interest of each and every one of our schools in Hartford and the students they serve. Investing in education is an investment in the future of our community, and we cannot afford to compromise on the quality of education provided to each and every one of the students. I implore you to act swiftly and decisively to address this pressing issue and ensure that Hartford Public Schools have the resources and support necessary to continue to thrive. Our students deserve nothing less than the best education possible, and it is incumbent upon us, as stewards of their future, to provide them with the opportunities and resources they need to succeed. Thank you for your attention to this situation, and I hope that this... And what I said, this is from my heart, that this is taken into consideration. Thank you. Have a good day.
Hello, everyone. When my children came to Hartford Public Schools, we were post-pandemic. My children were transfer students into the Hartford Public School, into a magnet school, and they, educationally, emotionally, and mentally, were not in a place where they were doing well. Because of the hard work, dedication, and passion of our educators and our faculty, they were able to regain their love of education. They were able to thrive in this district, and we've come to love it, and it's become our home. But now, our school, our teachers, and our faculty are at risk. The level of education that our students are used to is in danger. And I, as a parent, it hurts my heart to think of our schools and our students and the things that they'll lose if, as a community, we don't figure out this budget. And I don't want, in a few years, our students that are graduating from the Hartford Public School system to look back at their education and feel as if they were missing something, as if they lost an opportunity by being in our district. I don't want the students that are here to look for other options and to leave our district because we have such amazing staff, amazing faculty, and amazing heart in our tiny little town. Thank you for your time, and I hope that we are able, as a community, to figure this out, to help our students.
Good evening. My name is Latasha Fratt. I want to say, dear fellow Hartford Public School community, I would like to begin by saying that I'm sorry to hear about the budget cuts affecting our community because it affects us all as a whole. The students suffer because resources and support are cut. It affects staff because some will be unemployed, and the others will have to wear many hats and fill many shoes. It affects parents and guardians because certain programs that helped us seek help for ourselves and our children won't be available, and it affects the community because it severs ties that brought us all together. For there to be such a huge cut to staff and resources at this time are both alarming and concerning. With the pandemic just passing us by and all the damage it caused mentally and academically, you would think that more would have been done to assist and recover from the loss the pandemic threw our way, since we knew that at some point the COVID funding was going to dry up. With mediocre Wi-Fi that impacts the quality of learning during the day, the dwindling student body that seek quality education elsewhere, and the teachers and staff that are let go and seek jobs elsewhere or just leave the profession altogether, you would figure that preserving quality educators, social workers, guidance counselors, sports, arts, and the like would be at the top of the list to help our children thrive and succeed after such an ordeal as COVID. COVID threw us all for a loop, and for budget cuts to be on the table right now is a slap in the face. These students have suffered enough from budget cuts from the past to present, and it's a shame. Everyone keeps talking about their children, but yet here we are today. We can't continue to allow the students to suffer because they deserve the best at the end of the day, and they are the future. Thank you.
Good evening, Board Members and community members. I want to first start by taking a little bit of my time to applaud and commend all of the incredible students you've heard from so far and that you will be hearing from later on tonight. Hartford has really, really well-spoken, really incredible young people here, and I am a teacher at HMTC. It's our job to make sure that their future is as bright as they are. Not only am I a teacher at HMTC, but this is my eighth year in education. This is my second state. This is my fourth school, and my fourth school district, and I can say without any hesitation and without a doubt that HMTC is the best place I have ever worked. The passion and the community that is prevalent in everything that comes out of the school is incredible. And as an educator, it's exactly what we hope to see for our students. I want to talk about the budget for HMTC just a little bit, as you've heard from our students and as some of you have already heard from us as staff. But as a math teacher, the numbers just don't make sense. We talk about an equity-based starter budget that's based fully... That is based primarily on student enrollment. Yet, as one of the most populated schools in the district, our funding is scarce. Schools receive... Magnet schools receive state funding from a magnet operating grant that is supposed to be in addition to funding from the district. It is not supposed to take up or replace funding from the district. Yet, when broken down and eliminating the money that we are getting for our suburban students and focusing on our urban students, our students who live within a block of our school, our students who we, as teachers, see walking into our building sopping wet on rainy days because they walked to school to get their education, they're being severely underfunded. Approximately $12,000 a student for next school year, when there are schools in this district that are getting $20,000 for their students, per student. It's that alone is inequity, okay? To take off my teacher hat, I want to put on my parent hat because I, along with being a very passionate educator, I'm a parent. And I'm not just any parent. One of our very many potential incoming eighth graders at HMTC is my own child, who has requested to come to HMTC because he sees the passion I come home with every single day from the place I work. I've taken him to sporting events, and he hears the way that I talk about my job, and he wants to be part of Hartford community, not just at HMTC, but here in Hartford. But I'm not sure that that's going to be able to happen because of what we're facing as a school. And it really is... It's terrible. Thank you guys so much for your time tonight. I know that there's very little that can realistically be done at this moment, but I really hope that you guys are taking into consideration the things you're hearing from our incredible community, not just from HMTC, but from all of Hartford. Thank you so much.
Melissa Gavanna. Pat Mack.
Good evening. Esteemed Board Members of the Hartford Board of Education and Madam Superintendent. Esteemed Board members of the Hartford Board of Education and Madam Superintendent, last month I stood before you and I spoke about the mistreatment of teachers. This month I speak to you in regards to the budget. I had a speech that I wrote, but sitting here, after being educated for 32 years, after being a graduate of the class of 1982 Weaver High School, going through budget cuts is nothing new for Hartford. However, I want to say this. I don't know how or why we're having this conversation in 2024. Because we know fiscally that this district is not a wealthy district, but we have never had financial issues where we had not overcome before. Now, they say mental health is a problem in education. I saw for a little while, they're not lying. The children are suffering. The teachers are suffering. The school district is suffering, but we talking about money here. Now, let me tell you a little secret. AI, artificial intelligence, is coming, and it's coming fast and strong. If we are talking about money, money is not our issue, people. It's preparing our children for the future. You saw those children back there? They're scared. They're the ones who are actually enlightened. We got a bunch of kids sitting around who have no clue. Why? Because the adults in the room have no clue. Because things are moving so fast, we're trying to plug in like the little boy in the Holland Tunnel. You're trying to plug a hole. Honey, this ain't a hole, this is a hole Niagara Falls. So let's look at the money, yes, but let's look at what the real deal is. The real deal is this. What are we doing for our children? When you go back and you look at the budget, the children, the faculty members, they're more than just a piece of paper and a number. Go back to your legislators and tell them, we need the money. Show us the money. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, everyone. I got here super early and I was excited. I put my name on the list and I went out to the field. Did y'all see what was out there? It was a field full of beautiful children playing and laughing and enjoying each other. And I passed by some parents that were in the car eating. They wouldn't share their food with me. It was all right. So I'm slightly hungry and a little jealous from not being outside, but I am here in solidarity with my family here at, from Hartford Public High School, look at all the people there, as well as members of the Office of Family and Community Partnership, two groups of folk that I am deeply invested in supporting and working with for the betterment of the school district. And so, for my Hartford High hat, I'd like to point to the fact that we are north of $3 million in the deficit of a budget cut. This translates to 48 adults, 21 certified teachers from English, foreign language, math, physical ed, science, social studies, tech, special education, social workers, art, and advanced placement classes, which you've heard from several students. I am the mother of a junior in Hartford High who is in those advanced placement classes, and I'm a proud graduate of Hartford High who took advanced-level classes. And if this is going to be a true comprehensive, we need everything in the building. And so I'm a little scared, just like the students. So we're missing PARA's, Student Engagement Specialists, and security. Hartford Public Schools put out a piece a couple months back that my daughter was featured in, and in that piece she was asked, who is the most influential person? And she loves her teachers, no disrespect, you know she loves y'all. But she said it's the security guard who greets her with a, "Good morning, Christina. I'm so happy you're in the building." That makes a difference. So when we talk about these 48 people, humans, from every single piece of the building, these are dedicated staff. They're not concerned that they may be bumped and put into another building. They are, they like, it's, that's not the issue. They don't want job security. They want job security in Hartford Public High School. It's a community. And then, secondly, I want to touch upon the Office of Family and Community Partnership and its invaluable supports that is given to me as well as a bunch of other students to create, well, parents and students to create community and build capacity as parents. We feel empowered, we feel knowledgeable about the system, and we feel as though we are here and a part of the system. And so, I just implore that, you know, you think about the people that are truly engaging parents and students, which are these 48 adults that are being cut from Hartford Public's building, and I don't even know what's going to be happening to the Family and Community Partnership Department, but we need all of the staff that come out of that division, and there's one up for loss in our building that is invaluable to our work.
Good evening to the Board members and Hartford Public Schools community. My name is Caitlin Daly. I'm an art teacher at Hartford Public High School, one of only two art teachers at the highest enrolled school in our district for high school students. I work hard to make sure that our students are well-supported, they're comfortable and safe, and can have enriching experiences at school that reach outside of the classroom. I have personally funded field trips, held entire art classes, run on donations and grants I applied for, and my class serves as a major point of inclusion for various special education programs at our school. Myself and Ms. McCants, the other art teacher, teach over 600 students in a school year, and there are 700, plus or minus, enrolled at our school right now. Students need a full year of art to graduate, and we work to ensure students meet this requirement, and we go above and beyond to accommodate the many needs of our students to prepare them for the next step. Today, during lunch, I was informed my position was listed to be cut next year. This is not what was reflected on the proposed budget that you have presented by the board. I'm concerned that, while I already worry our students do not have adequate access to resources without the person, without personal rallying of teachers, now those teachers who work hard to give these materials and experiences will not be there to ensure the students receive a fair and equitable experience. In 2020, I chose to be at Hartford Public High School over other options. I had a very secure placement in a very stable and well-funded district, but I love Hartford, I love our city, I love our kids. I used to teach English back in 2013, and I was bumped, and it was okay, but Hartford was my favorite and it's my heart, and I want the Hartford Public Schools community to keep having teachers who fight for our kids. And if we're cutting them, what's going to happen to the kids? We deserve more clarity on how these decisions will impact our students until further clarity on how and why more teachers and resources then proposed are being removed, and this list is so murky, we should not pass this budget. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. I am here tonight to ask that the Board either delay a vote, and if that is not possible, to vote the budget down. And there are two reasons for this. One is a matter of oversight, which is my understanding, the major duty of the Board, and the other, of course, is what's in our students' best interest. Now, with respect to oversight, I was listening to some of my predecessors talk about the number of people at Hartford Public High School who are being cut. That's confusing to me, and I think to many people, because there doesn't seem to be a collective understanding of what Hartford High actually is. So in the budget document that the district has provided, it appears that Hartford High has been lumped in with other programs. When asked, are they actually part of Hartford High, are they not part of Hartford High, I was never able to get a clear answer from the various stakeholders I had conversations with. And so, if I can't get people at the highest levels to agree on this simple question of what is Hartford High, what programs are reflected in this budget, what programs should be reflected in this budget, who made the decisions for what's in this budget, what should this budget document actually say? I got different answers depending on who I asked, and there was no agreement. That is an issue of clarity, and as we know, there is not a ton of trust between the schools and Central Office. And so I am asking that, as a matter of oversight, that the Board exercise its ability to vote the budget down until further clarity can be provided, particularly as it comes to Hartford High. We need more transparency to truly understand what this budget actually says. I don't understand how it would be possible to vote yes when there are still so many questions about what positions are at stake and where they are, and who's even in charge of them. Based on that, how can we say that this budget is in the best interest of our children? We can't. We can't say that. You can't say that because we do not know exactly what the budget proposal says and doesn't say. And I'll state again, I asked numerous people today at different levels of authority, and none of them gave me the same answer. So that needs to be clarified, and I ask that you do your job in this respect to vote the budget down. On that note, I want to say thank you so much for asking. We saw in the news that there was an ask for the mayor to provide more funding, and I also want to say that I think that that is something that we can all work together on to make sure that Central Office, the Board of Ed, and the stakeholders within our community schools can help lobby for the deeper pockets who actually have more money. And so I've proposed, and I'll just take two more seconds, that we have a Community Action Day throughout the district, perhaps even in conjunction with other districts in the same position, where we go to the Legislative Office Building, united, to present our demands for additional funding. And that is something that I would be very happy, and I know that a lot of other people would be very happy, to help organize, even if it's not for this year. So this is something that I think that we can do, not just to work together on, but also to foster more trust, because we don't have that. And again, that goes back to the reason why I think we need more time to understand what these budget documents mean, so that we can all feel confident in them.
Good evening. My name is Brianna Perna, and I have been a ESAL teacher for four years at Hartford Public High School, teaching our wonderful and brilliant multilingual learners. In that time, I have come to adore the students at Hartford Public High School, which are now about 40% multilingual learners. I can confidently say that these students are some of the bravest, kindest, most resilient kids that I know. I would like to focus on the word resilient. This means that these children stand up to adversity, challenge it, and overcome it. And I have learned that the multilingual learners, and in fact, all of the students at Hartford High, are resilient. They show their resilience through their excellent academics, strong extracurricular efforts, and kindness to one another. I have worked with students who have not been to school in many years, students who have seen war and poverty. I have worked with students who are not literate in any language. I have worked with students who told me that they do not believe in themselves and that they are struggling to find the motivation to come to school. I have also worked with students, many of these same students, who talk about how important it is that a teacher listens to them, that they have good teachers, programs, social workers, classes, and fulfilling things to do during the school day that enrich them. I've also had these same students talk about the budget. They wonder with worried faces what's going to happen next year, about which teachers they will continue to have as they move into 11th and 12th grade. We may be losing four social workers when so many of our students rely on their services. We may be losing so many of our wonderful people, classes, like AP classes and programs, which will also greatly impact the work of our college and career specialists. I have seen our students lament this fact and wonder if they have something to do with it. In order for the students that we all love to have the resources that they need to succeed and rise above what so many people think they are not capable of is funding, I believe that all of my students and all of the students at Hartford Public High School can succeed if they are given the right classes, funding, support personnel, and teachers to help them move forward, especially those struggling with the language barrier. Recently, a multilingual student at Hartford High told me he wanted to become an ESAL teacher like me when he's older. Something to highlight is that he didn't say he wanted to, he said he will. He will become an ESAL teacher. I think that with the right resources, funding, and care from all of you, that each of our students will turn their wants into wills and believe in themselves and their ability to move forward, attend higher education, and continue to work hard towards their futures. And all of them, no matter what language they speak, will be able to succeed.
Good evening. I am a social studies teacher at Hartford High. This is my third year. I just want to say that I've worked for many different school districts throughout, pretty much Hartford County. And I personally think that these teachers here, and everybody who is not in this building but at Hartford High, they're some of the most dedicated people that I have seen out of all the places I've worked at. We have a culture, okay? It's gotten better over time, okay? And I'll tell you a story about how that started. When I got interviewed from Hartford High, I get a call at 10:00 in the morning by Principal Padro, says, "Can we schedule an interview for 1:00 in the afternoon?", which I found as odd, but said, "Okay." I got nothing to hide. And we get on the call at 1:00. First five minutes are just natural talk as to, you know, "Tell me about your experiences, you know, what do you think is important as a teacher?" Then after that, it turned into a conversation, okay? Because she saw me as a person, okay? And then, time goes on, about 15 minutes goes on, she asks afterwards, you know, "What questions do you have?" You know, you get questions that you're supposed to ask. I ask the question, and then she goes on further, and she goes, "What other questions do you have?" And because it was just her, I thought it was just an intro interview. And I said, "No, if I want to, I want to hold these off until there's another interview." She goes, "No, I already knew within the first 10 minutes that I wanted you on my team." She goes, "I could tell that you were genuine, that you care about what you do, and that you would..." And she mentioned culture multiple times, that she wanted to build up a culture at Hartford High. So, I want to say that I, as a teacher, I've grown. People behind me, they will admit that. First-year teacher, okay, I made all the same mistakes, okay? No different than anybody else, okay? I'm more confident, I'm willing to take intellectual risks in the classroom, okay? Three years ago, I would not be standing here, okay? I'm better at giving feedback, differentiate learning, collaborating with colleagues, and problem-solving. Also, the last person who spoke here was my co-teacher my first year, okay? So, this is only possible with the support in the culture of people attending, okay? With the BTs, the SSOs, and social workers responding to students, okay, they're very receptive with the students, admin cheering students, teachers on, and teachers organizing events and activities make school better for them. We still have room for growth, and the students depend on these people, and with this possibility... And with this budget, you're taking that away, okay? That culture, when you move people around, that takes away that culture. It has to start up again, and with that, the students will have nothing. So I understand that tough decisions have to be made, but I don't think they're being made with the best interest of their students. We need to think of what's best for the culture of the schools, because that is what is best for the students. Thank you.
Don Curtis.
Good afternoon, Board. My name is Barbara Midellas. I'm also on the list of speakers, and I would like to cede my minutes to Mr. Curtis, so that he has more time to speak himself, if that's okay with the Board.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. It's a privilege to speak to you here tonight, but actually, it's not as much of a privilege as it is to work at Hartford Public High School. I'm the Library Media Specialist at Hartford Public High, and I have been now for a little less than two years, but this is my 23rd year teaching at public schools in Connecticut, and overall, next year will be my 30th year teaching in education. During that time, I've been fortunate to be a part of some exceptional school communities, and here's what they all had in common: relationships. And that's what I really wanted to talk about here tonight. Personal relationships build a sense of belonging, which creates a community. And when someone feels like they're part of a community, they feel a responsibility to that community. They're motivated to attend in a way that goes beyond just showing up. They feel that they're part of something bigger, and when you cut positions, when you reduce positions, you sever those community ties. Because each person reduced or cut is another club, another event, another relationship that disappears. It's another picture that fades from the yearbook. That's what I wanted to talk about tonight. I also want to talk about the fact that there are currently only seven budgeted Library Media Specialist positions in the entire district of about 30 schools, and how woefully inadequate that already is. I want to talk about how this budget proposes cutting that number down to four, with only one remaining at the high school level, which to me is simply appalling. I wanted to take a little time to brag about the relationship building that goes on in my library during the programs that I've enacted in my short time at HPHS. Programs like the We Got Issues Discussion Series, where students discuss topics that affect our community. My Guitar Club, where students can borrow an acoustic guitar and practice what they've learned in class. Book Clubs, Mindful Mondays, Film Fridays, Quiet Lunch Times, Open Mics, Karaoke's, all the opportunities that I'm offering in my library, and I'm sure the other six Library Media Specialists offer similarly in their buildings every day. But instead, I now have to talk about this process, the process of rolling out massive cuts. The fact that we've been getting updates about a timeline for these cuts, redacted, corrected, revised updates about what positions might be cut or reduced or maybe not, based on a seniority list that has not been made public to us. Seniority lists, cut lists, three different lists that don't even match up to the proposed budget from March 27th. The fact that people are being told that their positions will no longer exist next year when not one vote has yet been cast in favor of this budget. We've been given a timeline, a timeline for how and when the cuts will be made, not if, when. But where is the other timeline? The one that tells us the process for if this budget doesn't pass? The public hearing process is still ongoing. You're still listening to the opinions of your constituents, of our students. So why are we behaving as if the votes have already been cast? Why listen to public opinion if the decision's already been made? Why haven't both timelines been presented side by side? To act so recklessly and carelessly is unconscionable. I want to talk about how I value what it is that I do, and that's why I do it. I believe that my position in the school has value, and that the students see that value. I believe my colleagues see it, and I believe the building administrators see it. And if I feel that way, then I have to believe that so do the social workers, special ed teachers, the paraprofessionals, the SSOs, and everyone else in our community. We do what we do because we believe it has value, because we value these students, these relationships. If you value them the way that we do, you cannot in good conscience vote for this budget. There are too many questions, too many ambiguities, too many inconsistencies to let this go unchecked. Neither this budget nor this process values the students or the professionals who work diligently every day to forge relationships that build a community. It puts students at risk, and it puts this district at risk. Relationships, belonging, community, that's what builds exceptional schools. Do not allow this budget to pass.
Dave Fraser.
Good evening. I'm a history teacher at Hartford Public High School. I've been a history teacher for about 20 years, even though I look very old. It is my second career, and I drive 25 miles each way for the privilege of teaching at a school that I've come to love, to teach the students I've come to love. Like I say, I am a history teacher. I'm also what's called the ECE Site Coordinator for University of Connecticut, meaning I can teach a class that gives kids college credit. One of my students is Christina Jackson, who I'm shocked to find I am not the most influential person in her life, but we'll work on that on Friday. Her mom just spoke, that's why I'm turning there. But anyway, I also spoke to you last month. I apologize for doing this again. I wasn't planning on doing it, but I was in a much better mood last month, because some of the impact of these budget cuts are starting to hit our school right now, and I think you've just heard some of them already. I don't want to tell you a history of Hartford Public High School, but just a reminder, since 1638, we've been doing it. But just in the last 20 years that I've been there, we went through a great accreditation. We were split up into smaller learning academies. We went through a total restructuring for reasons I still don't understand, and recently we're glued back together to make a comprehensive high school again. We've gone through close to a dozen principals and administration, and most disturbingly, we've scared away scores of excellent, dedicated teachers and members of staff, which is what's happening again. It's like Groundhog Day or something. Somebody, I think, just spoke who's going through it. You see, just about every year at this time, we go through the same thing, and sometimes you mysteriously find the money in the summer, and we invite the people back, but surprised they've gone off and gotten jobs in suburban districts, and we lose more great teachers and brain power, and we talk about teacher retention, and we're just the ones scaring them away. I'm in a situation right now, like I say, I'm a little older than most of you here. I would have retired by now, but I love what I'm doing. But when I hear that teachers in my school are going to be bumped, I went to my principal and said, I'll retire if you need me to retire, as long as you can keep the young people. I don't care. The problem is, I teach this college class where I can give that University of Connecticut credit, and you have to be certified to do it. So if I leave, yeah, maybe somebody will come in who can give that credit away, but our kids next year are going to walk away with six US history credits for taking my class. You know, it's not going to be the end of the world if I'm gone, but, you know, six credits is six credits. Anyway, right now, the crew at Hartford Public High School is just great. We're the school that takes everybody. I got a brand-new student today in my World History class from Haiti, a great kid who obviously is going to need more than just a teacher. She's going to need support, she's going to need social workers, she's going to need security, who knows what she's going to need? And you guys, I apologize, but we just can't leave these kids hanging. We take kids, I ask for maybe 30 more seconds. We take kids from everywhere. We take kids just new to the country. We take kids that the other schools, with all due respect, won't touch. We'll take, any kid walks through the door in the last, I'd say, month, I probably have had 30 new students. I don't know if the other schools can say that. So in closing, I am asking, somebody on that stage, I know you're all advocates for us, but we really need you now. We need a hero. We need somebody to step up, and we need you to tell, whether it's the corporations this gentleman talked about, whether it's the mayor, whether it's the legislature, whether it's the governor, call the president, I don't care. This is going on for 20 years. This flat-budget crap has got to go away. Hartford deserves better. It's going to be disastrous this year, and it's going to be a catastrophe for the city in a few years, when you've got bigger crime problems, when you've got an uneducated workforce. It's just not good enough. Somebody step up and advocate for Hartford Public High School and for Hartford Public Schools.
Ann Gosidien.
Good evening to the Board, the Superintendent, and all who've come here tonight to speak and/or listen. And I want to say particularly to the current students, because you have the right to do what you do and address the Board, which didn't happen back in my time at Hartford Public High School. We're going to take a little trip backwards right now, but it's a very, very important trip. I am not here in my capacity as a journalist this evening, but as a proud graduate of HPHS Class of 1968, the same class that my friend Gerald Fathergill, also known as Mike, was a member of. On Friday, April 5th, 1968, the day after the evening Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was assassinated, Mike and several hundred other Hartford Public High School students, an organically unplanned peaceful walkout of the school took place. Mike was part of that walkout. And students from all classes, not just ours, had joined in. This was not a protest. It was not a demonstration, an insurrection, or a riot. It was a group of grieving teenagers who walked down Forest Street to Farmington Avenue. They stopped at St. Joseph Cathedral for a few minutes of prayer, and then with a police escort that stopped traffic so they could proceed safely, they walked to City Hall, where they were met on the steps by then-mayor Anne Ucello, who sat with them and listened compassionately as they expressed their pain over the tragedy. The following Monday, Mike and a few of the other boys who had been on that peaceful walkout, their parents received a letter from the Board of Education stating that their sons, accompanied by a parent, were to appear before the BOE on High Street. When there, Mike and his mother were told, he was immediately expelled from the school. In addition, they went on to state that he was also banned from enrolling in any other city public high school or night school in Hartford to complete coursework and graduate. None of the hundreds of others who had joined the walkout were affected by this. Mike Fathergill was two months and one and one-quarter credit away from receiving his diploma. He'd had a dream to go to college and study sociology, but without a diploma, that was impossible. School choice was not an option then, and his dream was sadly deferred. But for the past 56 years, Mike Fathergill has made a name for himself by becoming one of the city's most admired community leaders, especially in the areas of youth engagement, innovative programs and events, workshops, training, and service to the city. He has received multiple awards and citations from both the city and the state. The breadth of his good work for those 56 years, much of it sociologically based, equates to life experience than more than makes up for the one and one-quarter credits that he was not allowed to fulfill. He is not bitter. His only wish is to receive his diploma so that his family can be proud of him. Almost done. By doing so, a grave injustice can be made right by this body. However, the Board rules for graduation from high school updated last year would only allow him to receive an honorary diploma if certain criteria were met. We believe that he should, his diploma should be retroactive to 1968 at the time this grave injustice happened. He should be judged on the rules as they existed in 1968, not in 2024. Speaking as the chosen representative of the members of the Class of 1968, we want this Board to invite Mr. Fathergill, at the age of 77, to be awarded his Certified Diploma of Graduation at this year's HPHS commencement. In cap and gown, along with the other graduates. His wish is for his family to be an attendance, because he wants them to be proud of him. You have the power to make this happen, and it would be of great benefit to Hartford Public Schools' public image. Thank you.
Gerald Fathergill.
Good evening, everyone. Born in Hartford, started out at Wilson Elementary, ended up at Hartford High. In my senior year, I admit, I wasn't a great student, but I wasn't a quitter. There's nothing that was in my mind to do that. Martin Luther King died unfortunately on the 4th. The 5th is when the majority of the students at Hartford High, when we came in that morning, was talking about, well, are they going to allow us to be released? And when Kennedy died, they released the schools. So in anticipation that they were going to let us out at least by noon time, so that we can grieve for one of our leaders that had set the pace for us young people. In that process of expecting the school to comply with the emotional kids, they refused. At some point after lunch, the majority of the kids walked out. I was still in my class. When they emptied out the corridors, I also left, went out the back door, proceeded to march with them down Farmington Avenue, and spoke to the mayor. That process was nonviolent. It was something that we, as citizens, had a feeling about our loss, and it wasn't attended to, and this is the kind of thing that bothers us. My main situation, position right now is the injustice. I was singled out, and I don't know why, as a person that organized it, and I wasn't, with no grievance, as Anne said, for me and my mother sitting in front of that Board. We had no grievance to be able to say, I pardon it. They automatically expelled me. Now, when you take a student that has an issue in a high school, suspension, a week, two weeks at the most, and it's done with, but to take my file and to send it to the Board of Education and to have them expel me, from that point, without question, is something that violated my civil rights. In that process of them doing that and not allowing me to complete my education, put me on a spin. The Board of Education is not controlled by anyone, so there was no grievance to a Board that had decided that. What I'd like to know is, what were the charges? And if they were criminal, why didn't they take me to court? Why was I singled out as one of the individuals? Was it deliberate? Did somebody put a target on me? We never got those answers. And I would like the Board to do some kind of research to find out exactly what happened. I have no problem going back and completing through night school, but when my education was taken from me, and I wasn't allowed to complete, and then they tell me that I got to go back on my own, well, you stopped it, and you kept me from doing it. Then at some point, you violated my civil rights.
Dr. Torres Rodriguez, if I may, I know his time is gone, but my name is Bridget Prince, and I want to say I'm here proudly representing Mr. Gerald Mike Fathergill Jr. This man, not only was he, and still is, a role model and a great attribute to the community, the community as a whole, this man was the reason why I actually got my first professional job in video professional job in videography in the city of Hartford. He took me to the Urban League 30 years ago and helped me get set up. He was actually, even though he didn't get his diploma, he was enrolled in a cinematography course that was established by President...
Ozzy Davis.
Ozzy Davis, under President Nixon. So I'm here saying, please give him the opportunity. There was also a case, very similar, Supreme Court case, because I know he mentioned civil rights, but there's a Supreme Court case that is very similar to what Mr. Fathergill was talking about. However, it involved two white students. It's called Tinker versus Des Moines. Back in 1969, students walked out with black armbands in protest of the Vietnam War. They were expelled. Their parents, like I said, who was white and had the means to fight the system, took it to federal court. It was denied. They took it to the appellate court. It was denied. They took it to the United States Supreme Court, and they won. And that's like a landmark foundation case for students' rights to exercise their First Amendment. So we're hoping that the Board of Education writes this wrong and gives him an opportunity just to walk across the stage at 77 years old, because we are here, I'm here with civil rights attorney Cynthia Jennings, and we're hoping that it doesn't move beyond this body right here. Thank you.
I too would like to ask for a moment with the Board. My name is Cynthia Jennings, and I'm a civil rights attorney. And the one thing that we have to recognize is that we have a constitutional right to legally redress and peacefully redress our government, which is what happened so many years ago for Mike Fathergill. Mike Fathergill is my foster brother, and he grew up and he did so many things in terms of fighting to keep the cemetery, Old North Cemetery, cleaned up and fixed up and make sure that the people that were buried in that cemetery were never forgotten. He's done so many things in terms of things that would have led up to his degree in anthropology. For what Mike Fathergill has taught us and what he knows in this city, we should be giving him an honorary degree, not just his civil rights to have his high school diploma, but at a very minimum, I think it would do very much and give us national recognition to stand up and allow this man at 77 years old to walk with the other students that have peacefully, and maybe some have never redressed their government, but he's a role model that they can look up to, to understand that everyone has a right to redress their government peacefully. And if we don't redress our government, then what is our, you know, what is our value on this earth? So I'd like to just ask the Board to set a standard and to make history by making, giving a black man his degree, his diploma that he has rightfully earned, and to grant him the credit and a half or credit and a quarter that he's missing, grant that based on his life experience and allow him to march on this stage in this next Hartford Public High School graduation. Thank you.
Good evening. That's a tough act to follow. But good evening, members of the Board of Ed, Superintendent of Schools. My name is Carol Gale, and I am a Hartford resident, taxpayer teacher, and president of the Hartford Federation of Teachers. Last month, I ended my comments by acknowledging the difficult road ahead concerning budget cuts, eliminated positions, involuntary transfers, and eventual layoffs. HFT did receive the seniority list from the district and appreciates the communication that has occurred thus far between the district and the union to ensure contractual processes are followed. We hope this communication continues throughout the next several weeks. As we anticipate, there will be many challenges forthcoming, which will be better addressed by working together. Tonight, you are being asked to approve a budget for next year that is insufficient to meet the needs of our students. This budget represents higher class sizes, less student choices in electives, the elimination of classroom paraeducators, the already inadequate number of art and music and library teachers cut further in half, and less support for family engagement, student mental health, behavioral challenges in the classroom, and reducing the rate of chronic absenteeism. These were cuts made in order to keep a budget within the confines of expected revenue. Given those confines, you, as the Board of Education, have at least two choices to address this budget crisis. One is to scrutinize further the expenditure of existing revenue, and the other is to lobby and advocate for more revenue. The first choice regarding tonight's agenda also relates to several contracts that are up for approval. Three of those contracts HFT strongly opposes: CBS Therapy, Solient, and Stepping Stone, because each contract's out bargaining unit work to outside agencies. The total cost of these contracts is approximately $5.5 million for about 70 positions. While we agree that the district needs to fill all positions so our students receive the educational services they need, in a time of budget cuts, this $5.5 million could be better used to strengthen our own recruitment efforts, streamline our hiring process, and improve compensation towards greater competitiveness. The employees from outside agencies are not held to the same requirements as HPHS employees, are not a part of the fabric of the school community, they are not employees of the district, and are not eligible for union membership, thereby undercutting unions and denying workers the protection of union contracts. HFT urges you to not approve these contracts such that the funds can be reallocated within the district. The second choice. Under Mr. Rigor's leadership, the district has embarked on legislative advocacy. Mr. Rigor also recently wrote an op-ed to the Hartford Current that was a plea for more financial support for our city schools. Thank you, Mr. Rigor. These efforts need to be continued and ramped up. The city council, mayor, state legislators, governor, and all stakeholders need to hear from Hartford Public Schools, not just from the Chairman of the Board, but from all Board members, from the Superintendent, from district administrators, teachers, union leaders, union members, students, and families. This is a fight for the children of Hartford. They deserve all of us fighting for them.
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent. Good evening to the community. Good evening to the staff. Good evening to my colleagues in the Coalition of Unions. So this is not just about funding, but it's also about the soul of our city, and Hartford Public Schools happens to be the heartbeat of that city, right? So what makes Hartford rich? Well, what makes Hartford rich is not the money. What makes Hartford rich is all of this diversity, all of this spirit that you see these young people are so brave to come here and speak. I was not as brave as you were at your age because I wasn't as focused. And it's so important to our student Board members that you guys have an opportunity to be a part of your future and be a part of the decisions that are made for your future. So Mayor Runan, I know you're listening. Governor Lamont, I know you're listening. We also had the Secretary of Education here at Hartford Public High School speaking. I know he's listening. So what is important here is Hartford is the capital city of Connecticut. And why is it important to have a thriving capital city? Because every other surrounding city and Hartford County City pulls from our resources. Let me give you a story. I started off in the Classical Magnet Program. I grew up on Albany Avenue and Brook Street. Started off in the Classical Magnet Program when it was just being piloted. It was a great program. I learned a lot. One of my favorite teachers was Mr. Callahan, who taught philosophy. So you may hear a little bit of that when I address you. But I left the Classical Magnet Program to pursue basketball at Windsor High School. And I see many of my Windsor colleagues who are here that have spoke. See, that pooling of Hartford's soul and its resources to branch out into other cities, we are all invested, whether we know it or not, whether you live here or not. Hartford is the heartbeat of Connecticut. And with a good capital city, an investment in our capital city, so to our politicians, we need more funding. Chairman, you are exactly right. Board members, you're exactly right. We need to broaden the amount of funding that comes in. We need more funding. Now, with that being said, we need to have a special committee that oversees how we spend our money, because we don't want to end up here again in the same conditions. But we all have to make this investment. We all have to be on one accord. Yes, we have our differences, and yes, we do not agree. And many people have said to me, "I'm like a hammer. I just keep on hammering away." But hammers also build too. So what I'm saying is this. One of the investments that I'm proposing to this body, and I've been proposing, and if everyone is listening, is we need to, COVID taught us something, that when you come up in an emergency situation, especially a healthcare, like health crisis like COVID, you're looking for people who can build a community. We need to start restructuring our educational system to include the trades, so that we can teach young people to build their communities, be invested in their communities, and with that investment, what we call learn, work, and earn, they will have the ability to broaden their education if they so desire. We are all in this together, even if we disagree, and even if we are not always on the same page, we are in this together. We need to do it together. We need to advocate for more funding. We need to stand together to advocate for more funding. We need to be responsible on how we spend that funding. But this is what we need to do together. I'm not here to talk about what is wrong. I'm here to talk about what we need to do in the future. Now, this budget is probably going to pass because there's been a lot of work to create it. I will leave it up to my academic colleagues to express their concerns of how they feel about this budget being passed. That's up to them, but I want to speak to the soul, and I'm speaking to the soul of everyone in this room. You are a part of Hartford, whether you live here or not. You come here, you teach here, you work here, students come here, you live here, you party here. To our corporate investors, we want to see you stand up too, because you're coming to Hartford to have corporations and corporate dollars spent here, and entertainment and everything else. We need you to step into place and say, "Some of that corporate money needs to be given to the Hartford Public Schools so that we have a bright educational system here, so that we don't lose the resources that are so needed." I'm so proud of you students. I'm proud of all of you who spoke. If we do it together, it can be done. Thank you for the time, and I appreciate you.
And that concludes public comment.
Thank you. We now move on to the report of the Chair. As it comes to no surprise, it has been a tough budget seizing with difficult decision. The Board has engaged multiple times during this process through workshops, committee meetings, hearings, and conversations. We have questioned, pushed back, and feel that while it is never good to make cuts in education, the budget formula and schools making the decision for themselves have maintained an equitable process and allowed the schools to have some level of flexibility to best meet the needs of their communities. While the fiscal cliff was well-known and expected, it is not less difficult. The pandemic funds provided our temporary relief, and we knew ESAR funds would come to an end. That coupled with 10 years of flat funding, modest increases from the state level, increased tuition costs for residents attending schools elsewhere in the school choice ecosystem, and the spiraling cost of special education, and, as with all other organizations, must account for the cost of inflation, must account for inflation for the cost of goods. With that said, I've asked the Central Office to revisit the idea of exploring the creation of a foundation and/or a fund development effort to help close these gaps that we have experienced. For those that are listening, if you remember, I believe in October 22, we had this exploration. And I think it's very clear that we need other sources of revenue to help our school district. It is important to note that these funding challenges are not going away anytime soon. We need advocacy at the federal, state, and city level, and I've launched the Legislative Advocacy Task Force, as well as the Connecticut Urban District Legislative Network, in an attempt to unite our voice into one. Given the recent remarks tonight regarding the budget and from what I've heard for the past few weeks, I urge everyone to take the time to read a recent op-ed from the Board titled "A Call for Equitable Education to Give Connecticut Kids a Fighting Chance." Again, I think, as I always say today, it's going to take all of us. I am very passionate about this work. We might have our differences here on the Board, as well as in the community, but at the end of the day, it's our future. If we don't invest now, I don't know what to tell you guys, right? This is, I mean, this is mission-critical work that we're doing here, and our kids are our future. So I'm asking everyone to pour in and help us. These decisions are not easy. Trust me, these decisions are not easy, and they're not going to get any easier if we just sit and are not proactive and engaging with the stakeholders and those that are controlling the purse strings. As a reminder, you can find the Superintendent's Report, full committee reports, as well as all attachments and videos in the meetings on Board Docs. All committee workshop meetings are live streamed, as well as viewable after the meeting. YouTube links are saved in each meeting agenda on Board Docs. I encourage the community to view the meetings and read the reports when possible. If you have any questions or feedback, please contact Christina Santiago, our Board Liaison at cssantiagohartford@hartfordschools.org. We will now move on to the report of the Superintendent.
Thank you, Chairman, and I will actually double-click on a couple of things that you said relative to the tremendous financial headwinds and the challenges that we've had to work through and will continue to work through, given systemic inequities in funding streams and demographic trends that impact not only Hartford but other cities and states across the country. Yes, we have a school-aged population in Hartford that is declining, and at the same time, enrollment in Hartford Public Schools has declined by about 21% when we look back 10 years. You know, some of those trends are also as a result of the school choice ecosystem. Over the same period of time, and because of that school system, school choice ecosystem, right, tuition has increased by about 200% to over $120 million, while the money that comes in has remained relatively unchanged. So we have more obligations outside of the district with the same amount of money, which means less that we can invest internally. So we have had to adjust to this unfortunate, inequitable reality until a longer-term solution is developed. You know, our fiscal year 2025 revenue, the money that's projected to come in, is almost identical to the amount of money back in 1920, right, the last budget that was adopted before the infusion of funding over $140 million that we got from the federal government for recovery efforts. So, right, we've not had to look through these things for three years. I will clarify, it does not mean that we had been ignoring it. We have been calling this out from before. And yeah, we have $140 million. Guess what? We will never see that money like that again. So we were going to make sure that each and every penny was invested. Mostly, it went to staff, over 260 staff members. And so we're now faced with this challenging situation, right? The inequitable funding structures, plus the fact that the funding, the recovery funding is sunsetting. The structural challenges, to your point, Chairman, we're going to need, you know, additional advocacy. However, right... However, right, all of this, this kind of collision of unfortunate challenges made for difficult and necessary mitigations. And we had our budget hearing, we had a community, a committee of the whole in which the request was, Superintendent, go back, further mitigate the remaining $5.7 million deficit. We did go back, and as a result of that, additional proposals were made that included reductions at central office, both in positions and nonpositions, leaving us almost a fully mitigated budget, leaving us with just about $200,000 to mitigate. However, I did present what I call these watchouts, right? Two watchouts, one including the reduction in the crossing guards and a reduction in community schools funding, which is something that I, I just thought would be extremely detrimental, given already all the reductions in staffing, especially relative to social, emotional, behavioral support across the district. And so putting those back in, we are now left with about a $1.2 million deficit, which I believe, you know, is something that we can work towards throughout, throughout next year. So I just wanted to give that as, as an update. And lastly, you know, we are committed to making sure that the equity started budget, which by the way, was something that our community was asking for. An equitable funding formula that took into account a base level of funding, but then had an overlay based on student need at each specific school. So we're going to continue to work through that. We're going to continue to get better at how we engage, how we communicate. It is a fluid and very complex process to, you know, try to get to all the nuances behind $430 million. So the commitment is that we will continue to work, to work at it. But I wanted to, Chairman, as part of my report, just kind of clarify an update there.
Thank you. We now move on to the report of the student representatives.
For the student report, it was decided to merge this month's and next month's reports, seeing that they were both based around advocacy. And we wanted to give the full picture of it at the next month's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to the business agenda. Business agenda, item 4.1, resolution, adoption of the 2024-2025 budget. The motion that the Board of Education adopts the fiscal year 24-25 itemized estimated expenditures in an amount of $429,410,300 effective July 1 of 2024. Superintendent?
I have no comment right now, in case there are any questions. Our team is here.
I will open up to my colleagues to see if they have any questions. And for, sorry, for public consumption, I do want to make a note that Board Member Pastor A.J. Johnson is during us virtually via Zoom. Board Member Brody.
Good evening, everyone. So I have a, a couple of questions. We've gotten many different drafts of the budget. This draft, we actually got delivered to wherever we were. I was at work today. So as the superintendent said, it's very fluid and forever changing. I wanted to ask for clarity on the teacher layoffs. So the, the clarity on a teacher being laid off versus a teacher being non-renewed and how, what that means for the option to, to come back. And frankly, what that means on your resume, right? You, you're in an interview and you're like, I got non-renewed. Versus, I was laid off because there were budget cuts. So I'm trying to understand that. That's my first question.
So non-renewal, that is performance-based or non-performance-based as a result of the reductions?
Not the performance-based non-renewal. That's clear to me.
Yeah, before Deputy Foster addresses, we, you know, no, first, I want to say that no letters have gone out. And when letters do go out, we will be very explicit in our communication that non-renewal layoffs, reductions in force, will, everyone will have an opportunity to go on the list for recall. Is that, yes, correct. If you want to add anything else, Deputy?
Sorry, about now? Okay. Yes, so everybody who receives a letter where their position is reduced because of the budget will be on the recall list. I think we're still exploring, I had a conversation with the President of HFT this afternoon. I think there's a desire for us to use the, the layoff language and not non-renewal language, partly just because how it feels, right? And, but we'll make, everybody's going to be on the recall list regardless. We just need to do our homework relative to the state teacher tenure statute to make sure we can just use layoff language as opposed to non-renewal language. But either way, we will ensure that, that every letter reflects the addition of the person to the recall list.
Do you have a follow-up?
Thank you, not to that, no.
Board Member Walker, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to, to note here at this discussion, there's an intent in this plan to, to bring on 44, initially 45, I think it's now 44 special ed paraeducators, which on the surface is good news. But in the same vein, we are proposing to eliminate 41 paraeducated positions currently in the, in the district. And so I just want to register my concern about the risks there. One is that we are reducing 41 people, a lot of whom we already have employed. Special education staff are very short in the state of Connecticut. We have never, since I've been on the board, met our recruitment goal for these kind of positions. So I'm just concerned that we will let people go. We won't be able to get the 44 people, and we'll have the significant gap in paraeducator roles. So can you just address that here for this group? How are we going to handle the reduction and the hiring in a way that's responsible so we don't have huge gaps?
Yeah, thank you for the question. So we, there is a, an increase in the budget in special education paraeducators. And as you noted, there's a decrease in other paraeducator positions. That's notably classroom paraeducator positions, as well as in-school suspension paraeducator positions. Those are positions that schools, in their school-based budgeting process, elected to reduce those as opposed to reducing other positions. What I would say in terms of the staffing piece, we will certainly going to follow all of the contractual language. And so paraeducators who are in, for example, classroom paraeducator positions or ISS paraeducator positions, we will certainly offer them the opportunity to step into those special education paraeducator positions. Is that speaking to the question? So essentially, sorry, just to be more clear too, right? So the classroom paraeducator positions, the ISS paraeducator positions are not relative to compliance with the expectations or requirements in a student IEP. So the reason for the 45 increase is because of our expectation around level of student need for paraeducator positions in the IEP. That's why there's an increase there. Whereas the non-special education paraeducator positions, those are really a decision point within the school-based budgeting process.
Thank you for that, for that response. And if I can do a quick follow-up. So just to clarify, so the, the ISS folks or staff will be given the opportunity to pursue the special ed parapositions. And so I'm just getting you to say yes to that.
Yes.
And I just wanted to, to, to say that because I felt this whole idea of clarity is one of those things, I think, that I was trying to get at least this issue kind of clarified because I realized that maybe everyone doesn't quite know that or have that connection. So thank you for clarifying that, and I'll, I'll yield to others who may have a question.
I do want to acknowledge Board Member Johnson, who has his hands raised virtually. Board Member Johnson, you have the, you have the floor. You're, you're very, you're very low. You're, we could barely hear you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm watching on YouTube, I'm listening, so this is delayed, but if you can hear me, give me a thumbs up.
Give us one second.
There is no, there's no delay, Mr. Johnson. I think it's just very, very low.
Thank you.
My, okay, me, me being very, very low? Okay, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
No, we, we cannot hear you. Well, I can hear you, but it's very faintly, but the, our community cannot hear you.
Okay, we cannot hear you. Well, I can hear you, but it's very faintly, but our community cannot hear you.
Okay, well, then you gotta turn me up, because I can't talk any louder.
Do you have an earpiece on? Are you using an earpiece? I would recommend try maybe typing your question in the chat. As we're figuring out the sound here, I want to give Board Member Schmerling an opportunity to see if he has any, any questions as it relates to the budget. Any questions or comments related to the budget.
I don't have any questions, but I would like to just briefly say that in all the meetings that we've attended, I don't think there's anyone who is, is committed and, and passionate about our kids and the schools and the staff as this board and the superintendent. And it's very painful for all of us to have to go through this process. And in trying to be as fair as we can, there's no, there's no win in this. It's just a matter of taking the revenues we have and trying to fairly allocate the, the revenues we have to meet the expenses. So as painful as it will be, I'm going to be supporting this budget and hope that our, our, going forward, we can retain some additional funding from the city, from the state. If we set up a foundation, there are other resources that we might be able to obtain and, and hopefully reinstate some of the, the changes we'll have to make right now. But it is a revenue issue that we, we have to resolve.
Thank you, Board Member Schmerling. I actually do have a question for the superintendent. I know Pastor A.J. Johnson had posed this question during our last committee of the whole, and I believe the superintendent did reply back. But again, for public consumption, Superintendent, can you please share with us what are the implications if this board, if this board vote was delayed or did not pass?
So the board has a fiduciary responsibility to, right? It's one of your three responsibilities in terms of approving a budget so that we can operationalize the budget. A delay in, in the vote, which, you know, we had the timeline. The initial timeline was to vote on the budget a month ago because of the impact that we knew this budget would have on, on reductions. And so our, our commitment to our staff to notify them of any potential reductions in force or to notify about next year's placements by May 31st will be compromised, right? Per our collective bargaining agreements, the process for identifying staff in positions that are proposed for reduction and then placing then our staff in vacancies, like, we've already begun that process because there are dates that we have to tend to per, per bargaining agreement. So a best practice is to notify staff of their next steps for placement or separation as soon as possible before their position ends this year. And I know that you might be wondering, well, it's only mid-April. Well, June is really around the corner when we think about over 380, right? Positions that we have to think through and work through. That's one. Another one is that we would be delayed in posting and beginning the hiring process for any redesigned positions emerging from the realignment that is happening at central office. So also by collective bargaining agreements, we have to post for newly created positions. We have to create new job descriptions. There's an interview, we have to post, we have to wait for applicants, even if it's internally. We have to interview and go through the selection process, right? All of that takes weeks. And a delay could mean that we're not able to hire existing staff into those newly designed positions before July 1st, which causes a lapse in employment, one for the staff, and, right, it also impacts the operation, our ability to begin to implement programming. A third potential implication is, you know, talent flight. And I've, I've heard this directly even today when I was at Hartford High, right? That, that the flight that we could experience from, from our great talent, that even current employees in positions not proposed for elimination might make choices to accept positions elsewhere because of lack of clarity on whether they have a position or not for next year. While we have strived to be transparent and proactive in our reduction in forced communications, right? So that we can retain as many staff as possible. I think a delayed adoption of the budget kind of like prolongs the uncertainty. And then a, a fourth impact, I guess you, you could look at it from an administrative process perspective. Like, one of the reasons that we aimed for a March budget adoption was to close our books on time. I mean, we, we're a $430 million operation, right? And so a delayed adoption would mean a delay in beginning the administrative process of finalizing the budget, everything in our financial management systems for this year, which, right, could mean the impact at the school, at the ground level, is that if we're delayed closing the books for this year, we're delayed opening the books for next year, which means that schools might not have their funds available in July so that they could begin to place their orders, right? And get their operations moving for next year. And so, you know, I'm, I'm, I was trying to explain it from a variety of angles, Chairman, not just trying to do right as much as we can by our staff relative to timing. It's, it's the largest number of reductions, certainly that I, in my tenure. And so even with the vote today, really that only gives us 10 weeks, 10 weeks, before June 30th to move through about 380-plus reductions in placements. And so that's a lot, that's a lot of work to do in, in 10 weeks.
Thank you. I have a couple of comments, and I do have a question around this theme that I think, that I posed to you and Chief Foster, as well as Chief Ratley, earlier today. So I think oftentimes, the public in our community is seeing the $429 million. I've always said that even with the $150 million that we received from, as part of ESER funding, that that, that just got us, that didn't get, that didn't even get us to where we need to be. I think on average, I think I saw a stat that, right, roughly per student, right, is 18,000. I know my, my, my friends that live in New York, in the suburbs of New York, roughly 35,000 per student, right? So vastly different playing field that we have here. So my question to you and Chief Superintendent and your, and your, and your staff, and I'm not sure if you're able to answer this, but again, just for level setting with the, with the community, what is an ideal or optimal budget that we need for our school district, given the needs and the realities? Again, we're not like Farmington, we're not like Glastonbury, we're not like West Hartford. We're, we're very much a, a, I think as one, one speaker said today, we, we take in everyone. What I'm grappling with is clearly this $429 million is not enough. And I'm just trying to understand what is that number that we need to get to? And, and more importantly, right, I think someone said it before, making sure that we have the right controls in place to make sure that we manage that money. So I'm curious to understand, I would love, I think, if you could share your I would love, I think, if you could share your thoughts on what is that, like, what is the optimal budget for Hartford Public School System?
I can, I can start, and, and what I said earlier during our conversation is that it's really hard to, I'll take the 35,000 per kid, per student. I'll take that as a start, right? Because right now, we're at, what, 18, 18,000? But I, I, what I don't want us to lose sight of is even the 140, say you divide that by three, right? So, every year, say, $50 million extra. I believe that everything that we have invested in, we have needed in the last three years. Every, 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 every person, every program, every support staff, every stipend, every field trip, all of it, I think we, we deserve. And so, divide that by, you know, almost 17,000 students, and, you know, it gives us what I think, you, you know, to bridge the gap. And I say that because I, it's what we just experienced. We experienced a culture, staff culture, that is cohesive, that believes in every child that is, that comes to their door, whether they came in, in the beginning of the year or two days ago, as I met a young, a young man at Hartford High today, doing their FAFSA because they had just gotten here for the first time, a new arrival. It doesn't answer your que, I can't quantify it, Chairman, but I'll take the 35,000. Absolutely, I will.
Thank you. Again, for public assumption, I do see Board Member Ledger has joined us. I want to give her the opportunity to see if she has any questions or comments as it relates to the 2024, 2025 general budget.
I don't have anything at this time.
Thank you. Board Member Ledger, followed by Board Member Walker. Pa, sorry, Pastor A.J.'s on the phone with a question. Okay.
Yeah, can, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. My, my apologies, there's something going on on Zoom. But I, I just want to say, after all this discussion and all the communication, I, I have heard from a little bit of everybody on this particular budget and how people feel about it and the different thoughts and passion around it. And I, I seriously hear and I empathize with everything that is, that is being said. And I strategically asked the superintendent, what do we lose with a no vote? Because I, you know, all, all, everything that I've heard makes it feel like, you know, we should certainly vote no on this budget. But at the same time, we also have staff that need to make decisions, as the superintendent eloquently said. There are things that, that need to happen in order for us to move forward, which makes this position and role very, very hard to be in. And so, I said all that to say, Superintendent and to the, the folks there, if there, I, I heard Phil asked, or our chairman asked, you know, what, what is a magic number that will make this whole? And in all the conversations that we've had, we are so, so far away from that number. And I, I, I just wanted to say these things because I, I didn't want it to feel like this board is being insensitive or folks on this board haven't done due diligence. We have certainly done due diligence to hear everything out. And there, there's just no great options at this particular moment. I do want to commend our chairman for, for making the ask to the city. That's something that we all came up with that we, that we need to do because nothing changes unless the state and the city changes, and I think we've, we've talked about that tonight. But until those things change, we still have what we have. It's unacceptable, and I don't like it, but we also have decisions that need to be made so folks can do what they need to do in moving forward. So, I'll, I'll, in my comments there, but I just wanted to let everyone in the auditorium and let everyone know who's been reaching out through email, through phone communication. You certainly have been heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Johnson. Board Member Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I want to speak to the, to the comments that, that were made today. Because it, it, it practically pushed me to a, almost to a no position as well. But I will say that, because I understand the clarity question you have. I've attended these meetings, and I had my own questions about how this budget reflects our value. And I, I took the initiative to, to call one of the principals in the district and, and have him walk me through his plan and his strategy around his budgetary decisions. And I felt better after talking to that principal because I, I understood his strategy, understood what roles he was going to play and what mitigations he was going to do. And so, I felt like I got some clarity on some issues that I had. So, I understand your anxiety. And so, I'm saying here to us, the challenge is, I think, we, we owe you some more clarity. And I, and I think regardless of the vote here, I think folks really do need to know. Because I know that I only felt better after someone sat down and showed me. And not to say anything to the superintendent or Deputy Superintendent Foster. Some of these conversations have to be held at a lower level for people who really can talk in some details about how teams will be restructured, how functions will be done with, at a school-based level. And, and, and my hope is that everyone who passionately talked in this room will be part of that conversation and be part of that re-knitting together of school culture. We absolutely need you. We absolutely don't want to lose any talent from the district. The only reason to me for, for not delaying is, as we've looked at this budget numerous times, to vote no to me won't materially change the numbers. At, at the end of it, a little shuffling around won't change materially what's going to happen. And I brought up early on in our conversation, and I'll be mindful of time, that high schools take on a disproportionate, disproportionate share of the staff relocations and reductions. And there's just no other way to, and I brought it up and we looked at it. There just wasn't a way to shift that reality. And so, I feel your pain, but we didn't find any way other than what the chair did, which is plead for more money. And that's, I celebrate him for actually going public with, we need money. To actually, we need money to actually fix this issue at this moment. So, I too want to say, I, I really share the passion expressed in this room and, and that the vote here doesn't reflect the fact that we need you as part of the solution in moving forward in the district.
Thank you. I, I actually want to echo Board Member Walker's sentiments, some of his sentiments in this, in the sense of regardless of what takes place here today with the vote, rest assured that this board and myself, we are still advocating, right, for more sources of revenue, more funding. Again, as I said, I, I don't, like, I'm, I'm looking for that optimal number. I think 430 million, just given the needs, what our community is, is well below. But as Board Member Walker said, we could reshuffle the deck, we could do X, Y, Z. That 430 million is not changing. It's not changing without any advocacy and engagement from the community. And I'll be very honest. So, I've had conversations, and one of the things that I've said is, we need, we need parents involved. So, when I made that plea to elected officials, I didn't make it by myself, right? I made it with union leaders, I made it with Hartford Power University, because at the end of the day, that's who's going to make the change here for our community. So, I say that in the spirit of, I'm, do I think this is the, the greatest and best decision? No. Do I think this is what we have to deal with to move forward as a community? Yes. And I will be in support of this budget. So, and I will give them forward to Ms. Brody for one final question or comment.
I have a comment and a question. A comment that I don't think we, we see it in some of the realignments. I hope that, and I'm kind of sure that, as far as the, the work we do with families and schools and support them and provide trainings, that we don't lose, that it may look different, but there's not like a significant impact to the work we do with families led from Central Office. That's the comment. The question is around the honors and AP classes. I'm struggling with that one. I have to understand how that, like, what is that thing, right? My oldest was definitely that child, that AP, that honor class. She went into college with quite a few college credits, which tremendously helped her obtain Hartford Public Schools. So, I have to understand what that means.
Yeah, thank you for the question. So, there's no question that this budget at the high school level will reflect two things. There will be places where there are fewer courses in some areas, and there will be larger class sizes. So, it does not mean that schools will not be able to offer AP or honors courses. But whereas in the past, we've had the luxury fiscally, where some of those courses had smaller numbers of students, we're going to be less able to do that with this budget.
Thank you.
Seeing no further questions on stage or in the Zoom room, the motion in the force that the Hartford Board of Education adopts the fiscal year 2024, 2025 itemized estimated of expenditures in amount of $429,410,903 effective July 1st of 2024. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any nays? Abstentions? Francois and A.J., I'm not, just for the record, can you please?
I said aye.
And Ms. Ledger? Either a thumbs up or? Okay.
No, I know that she was having some challenges with, with sound.
Yep, no, that's fine. I think the aye, the ayes have it, the motion moves. Thank you. I know that was a very difficult conversation to have. Item 4.2, contract approval, AMN Healthcare. The motion that Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with AM Healthcare for term outlined in the contract ended June 30th, 2025 at the amount not to exceed $761,400. Superintendent?
Yes, I'll do a, a brief overview.
Oh, sorry, sorry. My apologies. Let's take a step back. Do I have a motion? A second? Superintendent?
Yes, for general background, the AMN Healthcare will be, we're seeking to be, to get approval to contract to provide speech and language services to our students who require mandated special education services as well as paraeducators. This is a contract, right, that we come to you every year, and so, it is part of the salary line. And if we have the need to contract out, meaning if we can't find people to hire and we know we have to still do our service delivery, this is a way to mitigate that gap so that we avoid having to have any interruption in services to our students, also avoiding any compensatory services and/or any outplacements that might be necessary.
Thank you. Looking to my colleagues to see if they have any questions. And again, for public assumption, this was discussed during our last committee of the whole. Board Member Walker, I believe you have a question? Nope, that's, that's fine. Board Member Brody?
So, in the committee of the whole, we talked, we did talk about the speech and language. But we, we kind of talked about them separately. I actually thought it was separate, so they're grouped together. I'm trying to figure out what group of staff, because I struggle. I struggle with the fact that someone can find staff, but we can't find staff. So, the temporary thing doesn't sit well with me. So, I, I just don't understand that. And while we don't, the staff that's going to speak to this is not the staff that typically does our hiring and charge of that. But I'm struggling with year after year, contract after contract, that there are professionals that find the staff, but we can't find the staff. So, probably for the, for indiv, and then especially if they're like local and they're in the classroom. So, they can be found because someone else is finding them, but we can't. And I can't understand that.
Superintendent?
Sure. Ms. Brody, I can kind of summarize some of the conversation that happened in committee of the whole for our community, and then Ms. Hoffman or Ms. Ward can lean in. We know that, especially post-COVID, right, there has been a nationwide increase in virtual and telehealth services, especially for our speech and language therapists. So, the agencies are, are able to hire virtual clinicians where, right, we can't use that approach. We can't hire staff to, to do virtual service delivery. So, there are, I think, two primary reasons why agencies are able to hire people. And one is, right, they can hire to deliver the service virtually. And so, that makes them able to recruit nationally, right, from a wider, a wider pool. And then, some providers do, do prefer the, the flexibility in the working condition that, right, they have with that agency, with, with roles like these for which there's a national shortage prospective employees, like, they have a lot of bargaining, you know, power there to decide not just where, how they want to work. So, but, but the, the flip side is that we have to be mindful that in order to meet the IEP services, right, the alternative is to utilize the agencies to fill, to fill the vacancies. So, we can, right, we want to hire our own staff so that we can close out and not have to rely on these contracts. Same thing for, you know, if we had to go with school psychologists, but that's, that's the challenge right now. That's one way to look at it, Ms. Ms. Brody, the challenge. That, and the opportunity for others that virtual telehealth, teletherapy provides.
I, I do want to follow up on that in the sense of, just given the fact that we just passed the budget. And I believe one of the comments was made, not necessarily from one of our audience, was around the budget and, and what we're looking at. I guess my question is going to be probably consistent throughout the night is, what is the impact if we vote no for this, for this particular contract? Like, what, what are we facing? What if we delay it? Like, what are, what's ahead of us if we, if it does not, if the motion does not move?
Well, we're not able to provide services to our students, mandated services. And so, right, we, we, the impact, the immediate impact on the student, because they will not get their services. And then, we have, we wait potentially until the end of the year and see if we can have speech and language local, our local pool provide compensatory services during the summer to try to catch up somewhat. Or, you know, depending on the level of need, it's, you know, perhaps going out Or, you know, depending on the level of need, it's, you know, perhaps going out and having to pay more. I'm trying to think of like an external, like, if we had to outplace a student, for example, if they, if they have speech and language and other needs. And so the, the cost, like, we want to, we want to do it upfront, if you will, so that we don't incur later on.
And when, and when will this contract go into effect?
As soon, as soon as we can begin to hire, because we have students now that, you know, at the beginning of the year, that will need services. Like, we already have projected what the, what the need is.
Okay. Board member Walker?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. Because I have a, a comment and, and maybe a question will come out of this as well, or a recommendation, because there were, there were comments made during the, during the, the comment section that recommends no for all four of these, and I'm speaking more generally about all these special ed contracts. And I'm just going to say, special ed is high in demand, and we have an obligation to, to make, to meet that demand. There was a, if I can add this, an independent report done about high road schools, which indicated that Harvard has a high number of students in, like, high road schools. So we already have a number of students for whom we are sending them to specialized places. And so I, I believe we have a commitment to meet the needs of our students here in the district. We can't send them all away. And so I'm just going to say, practically speaking, that we, we have to fulfill this obligation. I, I will though ask, and this may be a recognition or a question, that this upcoming year, we really do some special kind of strategies to see if we can really recruit some of this, because we have three contracts, a special of speech and language pathologists and paraeducators in this area. And I would just be open to seeing if we could do something to make that better for the years moving forward. And that's it. I was here before.
Yep. Board member Schmerling?
I want to follow up on that question. So we're contracting for six FTEs. If over the course of the year, we're able to hire one or two, not necessarily all six, but one or two, would this contract allow us to go up to six, but not guarantee six, so that we could try over the course of the year of hiring our own?
Correct. That is what, it's just a salary line, and so we only ask for what we need. And when we don't need, we give it back, in essence, right? Like, if we find someone, then our person replaces.
And there would be an ongoing effort to try and recruit for these positions. Thank you.
Yes, actually, I do have a comment, I guess a question for the superintendent. Can you just kindly talk about kind of IP and some of the services?
Yeah, just to give a, to quantify it a little bit. So if we, if the contracts would support, so 20 schools would not have a speech and language therapist, and nine others will not have their full complement of speech and language, you know, pathologists that are needed. And so that's around 1,300 IPs that would be out of compliance. So that is, that is a significant amount of compensatory services that we would have to play catch up for.
And I guess to follow up on that, so 1,300 out of compliance, from a financial perspective, what like, what does that, what's the risk that we run? Like, in terms of fines or anything, like, I'm just, I'm trying to understand, like, 1,300, like, quant, I understand the 1,300 out of compliance, but can we quantify, what does out of compliance look like or mean for the district?
So we ran some of the numbers, and so when we put all of these contracts together, over five, right, almost $5.5 million, the impact could be up to $30 million when you think about potentially costs for not just compensatory, but outplacements that might, might need to happen. Not just because of speech and language, right? We have school psychologists that, they are students that have, you know, a deeper level, more complex level of, you know, behavioral, behavioral needs.
Ms. Brody, you have a question?
Yes, because we're saying, speech, um, speech and language pathologists, but I keep on hearing someone saying para professionals, specialist. But this is, this particular contract is just for speech and language.
It's for both. Can you clarify, Ms. Hoffman, the AMN?
The AMN contract is only for speech and language.
Pardon me, I misspoke. It's the stepping stone that has both. So I, I was making a general comment for all four, because I don't want to keep bringing it up every time.
But it is true, Mr. Chairman. It says, "as well as paraeducators." So I need clarity. Like, right under the motion, it does say that in the last sentence.
Yep, it does.
But this is not for paraeducators. And if I could comment, that when, when this type of contract is presented here, it should never come to us without saying, "we did all of these things to recruit this group of people." It should never just, like, oh, well, we want, we understand the importance of being in compliance. We know all of that, but we have to say what our efforts are, because it, it gives the impression that we're just using funds to hire temporary workers, temporary workers. So it should be accompanied with all of our efforts to hire this population of workers.
Thank you. So as a matter of house cleaning, to make sure that we're discussing the right matter. So if I heard correctly, AMF Healthcare is only for speech and language services. With that being said, I'd like to make a motion to amend the motion to strike out as well as paraeducators. Do I have a motion?
Moved.
Second?
Second.
So the motion is that, of the revised or amended motion, that AM Healthcare would be contracted to provide speech and language service mandated to Hartford Public School students who require these services, period. All those that favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. The motion moves. Seeing there's no additional questions, we will then take a vote on the amended motion, which is, the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with the AM Healthcare for the term outlined in the contract ended June 30th of 2025, at the amount not to exceed $761,400. All those that favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. The motion moves. Item 4.3, contract continuation, Connecticut Behavioral Health. Motion to the Hartford Board of Education authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with Connecticut Behavioral Health for the term outlined in the contract ended June 30th of 2025, at the amount not to exceed $543,536. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. So this is, the purpose is to contract, to continue to provide district-wide support for behavioral consultations, specialized interventions and plans for students that have IPs, specifically students on the autism spectrum, with autism spectrum disorder. You have some background there, but I'll just share a few of the highlights for the audience. Services, in addition to consultation, specialized training, there's evaluations for what we call FBAs, Functional Behavioral Assessments and Behavioral Support Intervention Plans, as well as direct behavioral support provision. They have, the team at Connecticut Behavioral Health has been able to provide us with board-certified behavioral analysts, and for two years, registered behavior technicians. And so the partnership has, has allowed us to really develop not just our internal capacity in terms of supporting our students in, with autism spectrum disorder. Last year, they supported the development of the Pilot Resource Program, the Transition Learning Resource Room, with highly trained and certified staff. And this year, we've been able to expand the pilot, benefiting up to 50 students with, within four of our elementary schools. And so we want to continue to have access to these resources.
Thank you. Board member Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is about those schools, because I'm understanding that autism students, students with autism are at a range of schools. And so my question is, are we going to expand the list, and who's on the current list? And how could a school get onto the list?
Ms. Hoffman, if you can speak to the consulted, the consultative services that they provide broad across the district and the specialized programs, two different?
Currently, our, the BCBA's and the RBT's from Connecticut Behavioral Health work in a number of our schools. We do have students with autism spectrum disorder, which means there's a range of complications that might be along with that diagnosis. We look for those BCBA's to create specific plans for students to be able to engage in the mainstream setting with their typical peers. With those plans, we're able to keep students in district without having to outplace, and I'm going to say really keep them outside of the district with non-typical peers.
So, so which schools?
That's across the district. Specifically, we have transition rooms at Naylor, MD Fox, and at Parkville, and we look to include more. So the, the BCBA's that we contract with Connecticut Behavioral Health allow us to, like the superintendent said, provide professional learning to our staff so that they are able to implement the plans to keep those students in district.
Okay, thank you. I guess the request I would have, then, beyond this vote, is provide information so other schools who would want to get involved have a process to reach out and say, "we want one of these rooms," because I'm assuming that's what the consultation is about, so you can understand how to set the room up and how it works, and train your local staff to do the work.
We've already engaged in those conversations with principals, so director, special education directors for particular schools are already engaging in those conversations.
Okay, thank you.
But I, I think what I also heard, board member Walker said is, I think as a board, or at least from his perspective, I'm, please tell if I'm, like, we want more insight into that intake process, right? So to the extent that you have in the conversation is great. I think what he's asking for is just more insight in terms of how that process goes. And then again, as we get questions from community members and so forth, we're just more knowledgeable of how to go about answering those type of questions, if it ever comes up.
I would agree with your assessment, Mr. Chair, because occasionally I'll get the comment that, hey, we got autism kids and we don't have a room. And I don't have an answer for that, other than to say, oh, well, hopefully you won't be out of compliance.
So not just the intake process, but the actual design of the program?
So you can give people some, talk to this person, here's how it works, and it will be, yes, it will be, we'd be more knowledgeable about it.
Board member Ledger?
Thank you so much. My question, I have a few questions with regards to these transition rooms. The first one is, are these seclusion rooms where, I don't want to say seclusion, self-contained, rather, where these children who, these children with autism don't have any interaction with other students who don't have, who don't have the diagnosis? And the other question, like, it's like a two-part question for this one. What are some, what are you doing to help with the socialization piece, things like that, so that they have interaction with peers and, you know, human contact, if you will?
Good evening, everyone. So I am the proud principal of Parkville Community School, and I am one of the schools in which the pilot of the Transitional Learning Resource Room began the school year. And what I can share is that our students spend an average of about 90-ish minutes, about an hour and a half, just getting specific discreet trials that are worked with, with a paraeducator. And the way that I heard about the program, kind of answering that piece of the question, was, I did go see the program at Naylor that had started last year, and I was interested because at our school, I have 19 students that have the autism spectrum disorder category. And so in an effort to try to answer and solve for that, even though I have two also I-GOLS programs in my school, I am not, as a school, able to necessarily access those seats in those programs, and the increase of our students that are coming in with autism is, is real and actual. So we were able to, through this program, we're able to have eight students that otherwise might potentially, right, could be outplaced somewhere else, be able to stay in our school. Again, they participate in the Transitional Resource Room, and the rest of their day is in their regular general ed classroom. So it's not a seclusion model at all. They go in with their paraeducator, they get their services, and then they return back to their school, or to their classroom, sorry. And then the way it works is, at my school, we share the same staffing. So the program runs in the mornings at Parkville, and then the same staff then drives over to Naylor, and they provide the services at Naylor in the afternoon. So that's the way schools have been able to share those resources. And to your point of socialization, the big piece that the registered behavior techs, along with the, with the ABAs, is that they work on creating those functional behavioral assessments and creating behavior support plans for students, so that when they are perhaps displaying some more of those more significant or challenging behaviors, they're working alongside teachers, they're going in and doing observations, and providing very specific strategies on how to distinguish or extinguish, I should say, behaviors. And, you know, they continue to go back and go back. So it's been a huge asset to our school, and they've also provided professional learning for our teachers. A lot of our teachers don't have, outside of what they got during their program, which could be, could have been, right, 20 years ago, if you're a teacher whose tenure may be two special ed courses, you might not be as well-equipped to handle students that have autism spectrum disorder and are not sure how to provide that in a general ed classroom. And so they do also provide professional learning to our teachers, which has been just a tremendous asset to our school. So I hope that answered some of your questions.
How should I say this? It did, part of it, it did. However, what I'm really looking for is, so what's happening when these, the folks who are in these transitional rooms leave, and the students are, go back into their general education classrooms? Pretty much, it sounds like without support. It sounds like they're being, you know, brought back to their classrooms, and the teachers, you're saying that the teachers have been given some strategies, if you will, to be able to work with the students. But if these individuals leave, these staff people leave and go to another school or go to another, you know, area, and the students are displaying more challenging behaviors, as you stated, what is the, how do you handle that?
So all of the students that participate in the Transitional Learning Resource Room also have adult support paraeducators, and so they are the prime people that actually provide. So they get overseen by the registered behavior tech and the ABA folks, and they are the ones that are working one-on-one with the students, in supervision of them. And then the paraeducators go back to class with the student. So they're not just left kind of unsupervised or without that support.
So they have, I'm sorry to keep this going, but, so, because I need clarity. So they have a para, the paraeducator goes with the students into the transition room?
Yes.
And they get the, you know, they observe, or they, they're pretty much, I guess, giving strategies as opposed to the teachers who are, what, so when do the teachers get the strategies? Because it sounds like the paras are getting these, these resources and strategies of how to handle the students once they leave. So I'm just trying to understand the, the real need for this. real need for this. And I understand that, and the reason I'm asking this is because as an educator, as someone who has seen these, some of these transition rooms, I have not, I'm just hoping that this is, it's different here. I'm hoping that it's effective and not, and while I understand that it is costly to have children go, you know, to another district or another, not even another district, a school.
An outplacement, yeah.
Yes, an outplacement, that may be what they need. I'm hoping, and I've said this before, I'm hoping that these transition rooms or these programs are not created in place of having some of these children go where they will be best served. I'm hoping that's not the case.
And I hear that. And I would agree that in one out of our eight students, I mean, we may still have to go the route where the plan, right, isn't, where their needs are not best met within the context of the programming. But one out of eight is one student, right, that, and seven other students, that we were able to provide the resources, the supports, the adult support, the training, and just again, going back to your question about the professional learning, the teachers are getting the professional learning during other opportunities where the RBT's are then able to speak specifically about Autism Spectrum Disorder, and what are the things that they could be implementing? Because the plans, the behavior support plans are written in collaboration with the teachers, and then they're trained, right? We find coverage, even sometimes that's myself as a principal going into a classroom for 40 minutes so that a teacher can go and get training with that RBT so that they're able to implement the plan to fidelity. And I know that Principal Edson's here as well.
Just to add to your point, I want to address what you were saying in terms of it being applied in the classroom and kind of being beneficial to our kids wherever they go. So one thing that I can really say about the Transitional Resource Rooms are that the kids are taking, it's being generalized, right? So it's not like an isolation, like your old-school self-contained classrooms where kids are in there doing one thing, and then they go back into the classroom, and then they're kind of just living, right? They're existing. They're not accessing the work that's happening. They're not, it's not tailored to their individual needs. So with the para educator having that training, they're able to then support them in the classroom with how do you take those discreet trials and apply that methodology and those strategies to help them to be able to do the work on grade level. I have, so I started right after COVID, our kindergarten kiddos who are now in second grade, and these were students who are non-verbal, who had never spoken before, who had severe needs, who are talking now, who are doing on-grade level work, are able to do that because of the strategies that we've started in the transition room in a very highly structured environment and brought over into the general ed classroom. So I just want to stress that it doesn't live in isolation. And in regards to like professional learning, yes, like that sounds great, but it's that in-the-moment coaching, that's the BCBA's provide, that's beneficial. I'm going to tell you right now, the staff meetings that I've had where I just have them present, those aren't useful, right? You have to be doing it and seeing it. And the RBT's and the BCBA, they provide that support to the teachers. As, as you were saying, we provide coverage so that they can come, go into the room and do it alongside with them. And that, we found that to be really beneficial. And then updating their, their program so that, again, it's including, now, what does that look like in the classroom? We have a student, several students actually in that second grade cohort right now, who their services are being decreased in the room, and they're now being serviced more in their classroom. And then the hope is to continue to decrease those services, right? Because that's what we want to see. We want to see kids accessing on-grade level content despite their disability, right? Filling in those gaps. And to have our children with Autism Spectrum Disorder doing that is amazing, because when you see where they came from, where they started at, when they came back from COVID, it's just amazing to see. So it definitely doesn't live in isolation, and there are many opportunities for them to transfer those opportunities, that learning over into the classroom.
Thank you. Board Member Brody?
So the classrooms that we're describing are not unique to this contractor, correct? Right. I've been in schools with my children over the years, and there's rooms, I can clearly see one from Breakthrough Magnet South, which I know the principal from. So we, we've had a district where the special education teacher, when a child needs to come into, I, sometimes it's called a sensory room and those sort of things. So we have them. This contractor does not make that. Like, they're a resource in the room, but they're not why we have the room. So I don't want to paint that picture that they're there and this is why. You know, I understand what they do, but we have, we've had that resource before we've had this contractor. What I struggle with is, and I won't repeat this after every contract is presented, because all of these contracts, I apologize, I cannot support it because we do not have, we are not presenting our efforts, because picture if we're, if we don't have, this one is five, over $500,000, we have a million-dollar one coming up, and I know, and we're like outsourcing when we have, while we're laying off staff. So I just struggle with these huge numbers in that regard, and we're not using ESER funds. I know we were using ESER funds previously, now we're not. But we, we have to be a district with a plan of how we do these things, because schools have done these things without this contractor. So that's what I'm struggling with. And I'm picturing, we, we did a big disservice, not this board, not this superintendent, many superintendents ago, when I sat in the audience where we severely decreased our para professional staff. Like, we, it was, it was in the mix of building a lot of schools, and that happened with requiring certain education. We had elders like that could make a classroom come to order, like just by their presence. Like, so we did a, a disservice was done then that we are struggling with now, but we have to figure out a way, and we have to hold talent management accountable, because we would not have to do so much restructuring if we're doing our due diligence in our hiring and recruiting and having a culture across the district, both central office, both in, in all schools. So I cannot support these contracts coming up. I know what they mean professionally, trust me, but each year, I can't sit here and not have a presentation on what we've done to not be in this situation. And after our discussions last year on these contracts, I just thought we would have that presentation because it was some board member that was like, I was convincing board members, like, we need to do this. And I'm not a contract-type-of-person. I cannot, because we cannot continue this way. I, I support the folks who, these people are local people who walk in and provide a service. So they can be hired. I don't know what, and I've said it before, like, I don't know what we have to have in place that we're saying, you work the temp agency, okay, you might get paid this service, or not even temp, this agency, but just continually pushing the money for it. I can't do it. But I will not repeat this, you know, before every vote for each other contract. But we cannot continue in this way. We need a viable workforce that work, they get benefits, they are part of our communities, because unlike the previous contract, it's virtual, we can't find these people. We had to do what we, we have to do, we have to do, we have to provide it. But these folks, they're breathing, walking, touching, they're with our kids. We can't continue this path. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. The one comment I would say, which I think we fail to acknowledge, and that speaks to Board Member Brody's comments around our efforts to recruit, is I know through the budget process that there has been some realignment at central office, looking for synergies. And I just want to echo Ms. Brody's comments and, and say that, right, when, this time next year, when we have any similar conversations, that we have very clear line of sight of the effort that has taken place. I know Superintendent, you have, you have tried to streamline some of those, some of those things. We don't have to get into it now, but I get the expectation from this board, and I just want to be very clear, is that our dependence on these type of contracts is lessened year over year. Now, ideally, we would not be in this situation, but I recognize the reality that we're facing. And I just want to make it very clear that, I think as a board, what you're hearing from us is that there needs to be less dependencies on these types of contracts. And, and that will ultimately allow us our ability to grow our own, but more importantly, put money back to our kids.
With that being said, seeing no questions or additional comments, the motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes superintendent to execute a contract with Connecticut Behavioral Health for the term outlined in the contract ending June 30th of 2025 at the amount not to exceed $543,536. All those who favor and signify by saying aye? Any nays?
Nay.
Abstentions?
Abstain.
The ayes have it, the motion moves. Item 4.4, contract continuation, CBS Therapy. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes superintendent to execute a contract with CBS Therapy for the term outlined in the contract ending June 30th of 2025 at the amount not to exceed $1,8,525. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Superintendent?
Yes. And so CBS Therapy is a temporary provider and permanent staffing for a variety of, of needs, speech and language pathologists, occupational therapists, physical therapists. And we hope to contract for 8.5 FTEs with CBS. And a unique piece of this contract is that we pay the company a flat fee and do not pay for their benefits. And so we would like to continue to contract, again, to provide the IEP mandated services. And Ms. Brody, I know that you referenced, like, your comments apply to, to all of these, and so acknowledging your comments.
I, I do have a question. So since this is a contract continuation, and I think I just heard you say that we have the ability to contract eight, is it?
We would, that's what the request is for.
Was that request made during the last contract? Like, was that request made during the last contract, and where are we with that? If, if that was the option?
Yes, that's what we, that's what the contract was for last year.
And where are we with the?
Oh, did we, did we use the eight?
You said up to, so I'm.
For this year, we used all, current year, we used all eight. So we're saying we would like to, next year we might not. I guess, Ms. Hoffman, if you've already kind of looked and forecasted out per the IEPs?
In reference to the IEPs, we would have to, we're looking at the 1,300 IEPs to ensure our in-compliance.
Okay. Seeing if there's any questions from my colleagues. Board Member Brody?
So AMN Healthcare, it says speech and language pathologist. This one says it too. What's the difference? Or can they find only a certain amount, and does this one find the rest?
Because there is a national shortage, we are, we are looking at other agencies to provide those services. So we are looking between all of the contracts, 33.2 speech and language clinicians. And so that's provided throughout those, the four contracts.
And it's virtual also?
Yes.
I, I do have a follow-up question. So, right, there's a listing of different staffing, right? Do we have an idea of how many, out of the whatever bucket that we have, how many are speech, speech and language pathologists versus occupational therapists versus, because again, I think to Ms. Brody's point, again, if I'm looking at synergies, if we have one vendor doing speech and, speech and language pathologist, I, I would hope we're not double, duplicating our efforts here?
No, it's just that they cannot, not, one vendor cannot provide the entire need that we have.
Okay. But I would still like to understand what, yeah, like, where's the effort? Like, with the million that's going to them, where are they concentrating the effort in terms of helping out with our staffing?
That currently is providing us with 8.5 speech and language clinicians.
And how many occupational therapists?
None. None.
None? And physical therapists? And occupational therapists?
None. It's only, it's just the speech.
Okay. And it's virtual?
Correct.
So can I ask a question then, I guess, to Ms. Brody's point? So how many is AMN Healthcare providing to us again?
Six.
At? At 761? Okay. I, I will, I just need to do some quick math, but I will see if my board members or colleagues have some questions.
Yes.
Board Member Walker?
Mr. Chair, so just to give you a preview, where, where are you going to get a rub is, um, um, sawyant, I guess to your point, sawyant seems a little pricey, and so maybe you can address that when you, when you get there, because it seems like we're paying for two resources and it's a half million dollars. Maybe I'm misreading that, so, so I don't want you to jump on that at the moment. Hang on, we're asking these same questions. The, I think the, the way I'm interpreting this, because I'm just going to say here, for consumption, four, four out of these five contracts are for speech and language pathologists. Now, I'm assuming because our need is so great, it looks like we almost need somewhere between 25 and 30 speech and language pathologists, that it's just too risky to go with just one company for that many resources. So I'm assuming the, the four vendors is to mitigate some of the risk of underperformance or losing a vendor, that you don't lose your entire capability.
That's correct.
Point avoider, you were in the wrong contract. You, you mentioned, I'm sorry, you mentioned four, what, you mentioned 4.5, but we're in 4.4 right now. Yeah. You mentioned 4.5. I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Me?
Yes, respectfully.
Oh, yeah, no, no. I was making the broad comment that, just to be clear, I said four of the five, four of the five.
Right, but you were talking, you brought up a different contract that we're not discussing yet.
No, I think he was just providing an overview, but I believe Mr. Walker is, the sentiment is around CB, CBS Therapy, is that correct?
I heard him say sawyant.
Oh, I did in terms of, I was giving him a preview in terms of doing the math, the one area, the one contract where I think there's a cost variation, it seems like it's sawyant. We're not there yet, so I told her, hold off on commenting on it, because we're not there yet. The question I asked her was about why four out of five are around speech and language pathologists. And so I asked her, four out of the five is because the numbers are so high, we need to mitigate the risk of only going with one vendor, in which she agreed that that was the reason they, they split that across four vendors as opposed to going with just one vendor for the speech and language pathologist.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay.
Board Member Schmerling?
It seems like the, the hourly rates for these different contracts are different. AMN is much more expensive than the other two. Is there not a way to negotiate to get them to be more competitive? Or do we have an alternative where we wouldn't have to use them? Or can we make them so prioritize so that the last ones we need are the most expensive and not start with them? There's a, it looks like a $10 to $30 an hour difference. There's a, it looks like a $10 to $30 an hour difference in their pricing versus the one we're looking at now.
Superintendent?
Yeah, one thing that I would add, so for CBS, they are, I think it's about $118,000 per? So they don't pay for, we don't have to pay the benefits, right? So this is more economical from that, from that angle. Right, whereas AMN?
Fully.
It's fully, yeah.
Okay, so is the benefits that we're talking, it makes the difference, okay?
This says an hour, so it's 85 to 105 an hour with benefits versus $75 an hour without.
Yeah.
We're paying benefits for the second contract, or they just don't charge us for the benefits?
They don't, it's more economical, they don't charge us.
Is that the basis? I thought that might have been the basis for the outsourcing, the first contract, the AMN contract as well. Maybe, maybe I misread that.
We, we, what we would love to have the same contract, lower contract, across all of them. They don't provide it that way.
So the AM, excuse me, the AMN contract, it says we do not pay for their benefits, but their hourly rate is still much higher. So it's not benefits, it's an actual cost that is significantly higher.
I don't know if I could say offline, but they probably know what, they know what.
That's what, yeah.
So I guess, I mean, from what I'm hearing, I think the question still to Mr. Walker's earlier comments is, is there ability to negotiate and have some type of harmony between the prices with these various vendors? I think we understand the concept of diversifying the vendor pool, but I think what we're asking is, could we have less discrepancy in terms of the pricing per hour regardless? And you could, again, you could, you could normalize with benefits and without benefits, but I think there's just a wide discrepancy between the two, at least the two AM and Healthcare and this CBS therapy that we're seeing. Board member Brody?
Mr. Chair, so we, we're voting on four different contracts, and they all got speech and language pathologists, like, this is, I don't, I don't understand it. Because if you, if we're going with the first vendor, who with, you know, a quick review, had the best price, well, no, they had the worst price. So if we pick the one vendor who has the best price, the folks are going to that vendor to get employment if they're the ones who's offering all the positions that we need. Like, I can't, so are we saying for the record that not one vendor can get us all speech and language pathologists? And have we asked them, like, could you get us all that we need? I know one of the contracts, it has a mixture of folks included in it, but we've asked one vendor and they said, we cannot get you that number?
So before you answer that, just from a governance perspective, Ms. Brody, for your knowledge, so there was a conversation that we had, and because we recognized that there were overlap, and there was the idea of not bringing it into consent, and that we would have these conversations for each individual contract. So to your point, right, like, yeah, that's part of your question, which I'll let staff address, but the other part of why we're talking about each individual one is because we want to have each individual con, each individual discussion for each contract, particularly given the amount that we have in front of us. So that's part one of why. Then part two, to her point, is answering the question of, is there one vendor that could do this and so forth?
I do not believe one vendor could supplement 33 speech and language clinicians. We have worked with it, with the agencies, they are even having it difficult time, that's why we have to run them through with so many.
Board member Ledger?
So, and I'm just, just for public consumption and for the record, so you said that you don't believe that they can provide all of the, or is it a fact?
They have not been able to.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I ask collectively, how many students need this service? Do we have a number?
Right now, it's 1,300. It's 1,300 IEPs.
Board member Walker?
Thank you. I think it's been asked, but since there, since there is this price variation, do you have a strategy where you, you reference the lowest cost provider first, and then you reference the higher cost provider last? Is that kind of how you work in securing the resources?
Right now, the way we've looked at it is that we've just, we've, we've contacted all of the agencies, and if they have available staff, we bring them on right away. If the request is to start with the lowest, then we can do that.
Yeah, I think that, based on this conversation, that would be the direction.
Are there additional comments or questions from my colleagues? Seeing none. The motion, I'm sorry, give me a... Yeah, sorry. The motion on the floor that Hartford Board of Education authorized the superintendent to exceed a contract with CBS therapy for the term outlined in the contract ending June 30th of 2025 at the amount not to exceed $1,8,525. All those who favor signify by saying aye. Any nays? Abstentions?
Abstaining.
Abstain.
We have two abstentions, the motion moves, the ayes have it. Sorry, the ayes have it, the motion moves. Item 4.5, Contract Approval Silent Health. Motion, excuse me, motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with silent health for the term outlined in the contract ending June 30th of 2025 at the amount not to exceed $500,000. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Superintendent?
Yes, I know it sounds a little repetitive, but because we're doing these separately, the request is to contract to provide special education staff, including speech and language pathologists, school psychologists, and special education teachers if needed, to provide support for students as per IEPs.
Board member Walker?
Thank you, in deference to Ms. Darastal, pleasure, yes, we are at 4.5 now, so I'll ask the question. So why is this one half million dollars for what looks to be two resources? Am I reading it wrong?
We have right now a school psychologist and a speech language clinician through Solient, two staff. So currently, so it's up to that amount, it's not that full amount. It's whatever the salary for those two positions would be that we would cover through the contract.
But let's be clear, so the way this is written though, if we engage those two resources, the expectation is that Solient would get half million dollars from us? No?
It would just be the salary for the two positions that we contract.
Okay.
With space for additional.
Okay.
Up to.
Yes.
Correct.
Well, let's see. Oh, it's an amount, not a headcount, the way that, the way that the... So in this case, you, you'd have the headroom to maybe have four or five resources? Is that?
Correct, so if another, oops, sorry. So if another contract was not able to provide a speech language clinician or another service, we would be able to go up to five staff with this contract.
Okay, okay.
And just along those lines, what type of controls do we have in place to make sure that, I guess just from an accountability perspective for the board, right? Just given the conversations, the questions here, so if I heard correctly, there's one, there's two FTEs, my...
Given...
I would have to get that information.
Because you're not, we're in the process of the IEP review process to determine whether or not we're going to hit the five.
I would have to get the actual salary amount from OTM to figure out where we are with that number, close to that.
Correct, because it, that, that, those two salaries has to be your baseline, and then from there, you have to do an assessment of where you think you will land. Board member Schmerling?
Are these positions posted for hire within the school district?
A question that Ms. Brody has asked in the past, so that we don't, we don't, no, and I, and ask it every year, so that we continue to make public the fact that we need and we want to have speech and language therapists and OTs and PTs.
PT, right, thank you.
And I do apologize, I do want to recognize board member Johnson to see if he has any questions for this particular contract and discussion.
Just trying, you know, just trying to hear the dialogue, but no questions at this time.
Thank you. Board member Ledger?
So I just want to be clear, so if there's, if there's a need for OT and PT, this would fall under that as well, correct?
Yes, and we keep those positions posted. And so if we find someone and we hire someone in November, right, we no longer need this service.
Thank you, and I have a follow-up question. So what about, would this deal with 504s as well?
Not necessarily. There's not direct service on a 504 plan, so this is primarily, we're looking at IEPs for these services.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I don't know that I've seen a 504 that would require these services.
Okay. The motion on the floor of the Hartford Board of Education execute, the motion on the floor that the Hartford Board of Education authorized the superintendent to execute a contract with solid health for the term outlined in the contract ending June 30th of 2025 at the amount not to exceed $500,000. All those who favor signify by saying aye. Any nays? Abstentions? There's one abstention, the ayes have it, the motion moves. Item 4.6, Contract Continuation Approval Steppingstone. Motion, motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with stepping stones for the term outlined in the contract ending June 30th of 2025 at the amount not to exceed $3,701,748. Do I have a motion? I'm so moved. Do I have a second? Superintendent?
Yes, and here, we, for example, currently, well, we're seeking to continue with the, with the, the contract. Currently, we have, we are contracting 14.3 FTEs, and so we would like to increase to 19 FTEs. And in here, it is including speech and language pathologists, and we also currently doing this school year, contract 40 paraprofessionals. And so we would like to actually keep that for next year. I know that there was conversation, a wonder, a question earlier from board member Walker as to paraeducators and whether or not they would, you know, have, be part of transferring over, for lack of a better word. And so I just want to make sure that, yes, that will happen first, and we still believe that we will need additional paraeducators.
Can I ask a question? With the 14 to 19 SLP, so I guess the question for me is, I see that you're going up on SLPs, is that correct? Can you just help me understand the rationale between increasing SLPs and keeping paras flat? Only because I'm not familiar with SLPs, I apologize, but I do know the role that paras play, and just curious as to why that remained flat in the other job category we're looking to increase.
We've faced some difficulty keeping the actual contracted speech and language clinicians, so there is, there are times when we have somebody contracted and they decide to end the contract. So by increasing this number, again, it gives us flexibility to quickly place a speech and language clinician in a building if we, if we lose one from a different contract.
Do we have, so this amount that we, do we have the ability to flex in between the two job categories? So for example, if we don't find a need to have 19, maybe we only need 16, can we take that other three to look at para, para professionals? Like, do we have that type of flexibility within, within the contract? Again, I just, I recognize the role that para professionals play, so for me, I'm just very mindful, if we could have more, if para professionals could get more support and we could have more in the district, I would be inclined to explore that.
Yes, there's flexibility within the contract to, for member Walker's point about filling in our paraeducator positions, we would likely look to fill all of our positions first in district, and then if needed, use a contract. But the idea is to have all paraeducators be Hartford employees.
Board member Walker?
Yes, just housekeeping, the proposal says you want to go up to 19. The budgetary figure has only 14. Is that just a typo? On the detail page for Solient? Or stepping stone, I'm sorry, stepping stone.
It should be up to 19.
Okay, under that budget block. Okay, that's what I thought. So we'll put 19 there, just wanted to point that out.
But just for clarification, the roughly 3.7 million accounts for the 19, up to the 19 FTEs that is referenced in the motion? Out to 40 paras, okay.
And I'm making, I guess, a comment, because the chair, you brought the value of paras, and I think that's very valid, but we have so many language learners in this district that I can understand, speech and language pathology really is about helping young people actually speak appropriately, and so I'm assuming there's a high need for that within our district because of all these different language learners and their different limitations speech-wise.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Board member Brody?
So it's so odd, going through these contracts, and Office of Talent Management is not here, because the questions are for the Office of Talent Management a lot, trying to understand these numbers. So Ms. Hoffman, I apologize, because the, it's so frustrating not to know that part. But 39 an hour, so I'm trying to understand how much per hour is calculated in benefits for a para professional. They aren't our highest, one of our, you know, better paid employees, so I'm trying to justify that 39 an hour. Because if we're starting them, I don't know the number, but I know it's nowhere near 39, how much in benefits do we pay and calculate per hour to make that make sense? Yeah, so that's a high number, even if we're considering we are not paying these people
Ms. Brody, we will get that in.
Ms. Brody, we will get that information. I don't, I'm trying to think, and I'm looking at Deputy Foster, because when we think about the average with benefits, are we around 70? 60 to 70, 70,000? Got it, okay, well.
But again, just, I want to make sure, this contract does not include benefits, correct? That's what, that's what I'm reading here.
Ms. Hoffman, I don't think this one does, just confirm for me. Oh, you have it.
Well, yeah, that's what it says here in the motion. The contract is economic in that we pay a company a flat fee, we do not pay for their benefits.
And can I make a request that we get a, not just for special education, but I want to say especially special education, could we get our plan, can we get presented a plan of what we're doing to recruit in all of those, all of these positions? Like, I need to see a plan of how this plays out, so we can know, we've done it, we've tried, we can't find them, and it'll be easy to say yes. But without knowing any of that, specifically to this costly number, I think it's not fair to board members to not know that other, and I know this is not your, I know you play a part in it, but Office of Talent Management needs to present efforts and future plans of what we're gonna do around our special education students.
Yeah, I would just make one comment, again, I want to reiterate the, just given the budget challenges that we have and the realignment that we're gonna expect out of central office, and to Ms. Brody's point, Mr. Chief Foster, I would look towards you on this, right, we're expecting to have that plan outlined and, and shared with the board as it relates to our strategy for talent management, particularly around special ed, right? So, or student support, yeah, overall. So again, my, I think the expectation is as, as we realign resources and teams and individuals, not only from the school level, but also as central office, that we're gonna have more transparency and more just insights into the direction that the school system is going into. Are there additional questions? Board member Johnson, any questions from you? Seeing no additional questions, the motion at the Harvard Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with stepping stone for the term outlined in the contract, ended June 30th of 2025 at the amount not to exceed $3,701,748. All those who favor this, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Abstentions?
Abstain.
The ayes have it, the motion moves. Item 4.7, second reading, adoption of the 2024, 25 district calendar. The motion that the Harvard Board of Education adopts the 2024, 2025 district calendar, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Superintendent?
Yes, I, I think the only outstanding question was relative to Juneteenth on this one, and so I know that I've sent in a clarification that Juneteenth for this year and moving forward will be holiday, meaning that our schools and our central office of the district will be closed, so just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you for that, that was a question that was posed by both Ms. Brody, and I believe was supported by board member Johnson, so thank you for that clarification. With that being said, I want to see if my colleagues have any questions as it relates to the 2024, 25 district school calendar. Seeing none, the motion on the floor is that the Harvard Board of Education adopts the 24, 25 district school calendar, all those who favor this, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion moves. We now move to the Casette agenda. Items on the Casette agenda are 5.1, approval of minutes from March 19th, 2024's meeting. Item 5.2, contract continuation approval for parent square. Item 5.3, approval of increase in educated diversity plan. Any comments or questions on the Casette agenda? Seeing none, do I have a motion to vote on the Casette agenda as one item?
So moved.
So moved, Mr. Chair, second.
All those who favor this, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Aye.
Abstentions? The ayes have it, motion moves. The April 20, the April 16th Board of Education regular meeting is now adjourned, thank you.